I hereby call to order this committee the whole meeting. It is Monday, December 7, 2020, and the time is 8:05. Will the clerk please call the roll? Here.
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 Thank you. I seek a motion to approve the November 9, 2020 Committee the whole minutes.
I move to approve the November 9, 2020 Committee of the whole meeting minutes.
They have a second.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. We will begin with the Facility Development Committee. I turn the meeting over to the FDC Chair, Ellen Sternwiler. Dave? We'll begin with the Summer 2021. Excuse me, Ellen, can you hold for a minute? Can people hear? Ellen, like, I'm having trouble, I don't know if people at home can.
It may be that you need to move the microphone closer to you.
It doesn't look like it's on, Ellen.
It was when she was speaking.
Just to the, to the board, sometimes people have trouble hearing us, so let's, we'll try and make sure that microphones are on and close when you're talking.
Kristin, can you move yours just a little more closer to Katie? Yeah, more to your left-hand side, so Katie has a little more room to move hers, and then Ellen can move hers.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry about that. Can you hear me now? Better? Better. There we go.
Yeah.
That's it. I just need to be louder. I'm a low talker. But the mask also makes it complicated. Okay. So, um, we are going to start with our Summer 2021 project planning updates. And I think we have STR and Nicholas and Associates with us today to discuss the planning process. Or Ramona and McKenzie, Keep 39 expansion projects and the second-floor AC at WJHS. I'm just, a quick question, do you want me to keep going with this, or let them take over? Because these, some of these get very lengthy, the next one in particular.
Right. I will cover the Keep 39 options. We're going to start with STR and Nicholas and Associates giving us an overview of where they are in terms of...
Yep. We have a lot to cover today.
We do.
So, um, at, in November, STR issued their 60% design review, which has now been reviewed by many of our District 39 administrators and staff. Nicholas and Associates has compiled updated budget numbers for the projects. STR and Nicholas will provide updates on each project, as well as timing considerations for each project, and what to expect over the next couple of months. So I'm going to turn it over to Joe, I think, or...
You want to start with the design update, Colby, or shall I jump into the budget update?
Uh, well, I think it was pretty well said that we've issued our 60% drawings, and it was reviewed by, by the, uh, maintenance staff and administration. And so, so we're going with that. So why don't we go into the budget update?
So, budget update. Last month, we were at design development for the, for the two projects, Ramona and McKenzie. We were at $7,670,706. So, uh, since then, 60% CDs have been issued. We've updated that budget. We're tracking a little higher than where we want to be, roughly around 3.5% above that 7.6 number. So right now, overall, with the two all in, we're at $7,958,793. So the rough split between those, we're at 4.4 for McKenzie and 3.5 for Ramona. I'm happy with where we're at, given, given the point in the design phase. This, it's not unusual to be tracking a little high. I've been working with the design team a little bit in preparation of our 85% CD issuance, which is due later this week, just to identify maybe some potential alternates, whether those are deductive alternates or add alternates. Like we do every year, we want to make sure that on bid day, we have a structure that fits the district's budget. So we're close. On that 7.9, we're roughly 288,000 above where we want to be. Just one, one high-level option that we may want to carve out as an add alternate would be the garden shed at Ramona. So we try to prioritize these things, which we're currently in the process of doing. That might be one where we take, carve out of the base bid, make it an add alternate, maybe refine the design a little bit. But it's just high-level things like that. Educational spaces, anything critical to that aspect, that's, uh, those are changes we don't want to make. So, within, within that 7.9 figure, we do have 245,000 in allowance. So that's roughly 4% of the hard cost of construction. So we like to make sure we carry contingency for any unforeseen conditions or potential added enhancements during the construction phase. So all in all, it's a positive update, and I fully expect some budget refinement to be realized during the next round.
Joe, does that include the soil? Okay.
Yes, it does.
Soil mitigation?
Yes.
Board, are there questions?
That's the baseline. The numbers that are in, like, our financial planning, whatever, what, what number is that?
The, the one that's in our, that we'll have with the five-year forecast is from last month. So the, the, you know, he referenced, I think, it's about 300,000 extra net between the two. That's not included right now.
I meant the, the capital number. I mean, the, just to compare, when we look later on at the financials, what, what number in the financials compares to the 7.9?
7.6.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, do we know how much the garden shed would cost?
Right now, it's approxi, I don't have the, the hard number, because that wasn't broken out within some of the budget proposals that I, that I've received. But it will, right now, it's north of 100,000.
Yeah, so, so currently, we've discussed options like buying a shed from Menards and things. So right now, the intent is to make it look, uh, like it's been there and part of the design. So it's an uninsulated brick building that looks like the school. So it's kind of a simplified version, unheated and stuff, but it is still masonry construction and, uh, has bar joists and things. So, so it probably, probably it's an expensive garden shed, but it's kind of, you know, the wanting to make it look like it's been there. They, they currently do have a brick shed, so it's kind of a one-to-one replacement at this point, so.
I'll let, this, this will be quick, because I know, I don't want to get in the weeds too much. So I actually have District 39 garden shed experience, because I was the outdoor chair classroom at Highcrest, and there was this massive issue with squirrels. Would the thing you're describing with the masonry construction, would that make the structure more impervious to squirrels than a shed from Menards?
I, I, I really believe so. It's a brick shed with a metal door and, yeah, would...
That's very, that's very helpful, thank you.
Yep.
How much does the shed cost?
About 100,000.
About 100,000.
Gotcha.
And again, I think Joe was explaining, we can do those as, some of these elements as alternates to, if the board is not completely competent. So that means we would go up and it, and then it would just be an alternate that we could accept or deny.
Okay. I think, moving along, so...
Before we let Joe and Colby go, Joe, could you just walk through the, just a quick review of the kind of timeline that we talked about?
Sure. Right now, both are scheduled for spring starts with August completion, so five- to six-month construction duration. I, I anticipate, well, I know that's a very efficient schedule, should generate great competitive bidding. I know we've started, and we've had spring commencements in the past, we've had June commencements in the past. I, I think, I think spring commencements work well here. I think both of them starting at the same time work well. So we'll have potentially a little bit overlap, about 10 weeks of overlap with staff and students. Again, we don't know what the spring's going to look like in the academic world, but, but we do anticipate that overlap. And like, like any project that, that has that type of overlap, we'll make sure that we're, we're isolated and we have a safe site. And we put together a site logistics plan to achieve ultimate safety, so. So that's kind of where things are at right now.
Oh, do we, do we need to give some thoughts from the board for the garden shed, or is that just for information?
It's just for information now. We'll continue to work on the design, and, and, and then when we come back, there will be some decisions to be made about whether to list that as an alternate, and then ultimately whether to accept that or deduct that.
I think the bigger thing to note in general with the agenda is that there's a flow to this, because we were, as a bigger picture, we were looking at the costs of proceeding with these two projects, and now we're moving into the, the Keep 39. From a planning standpoint, but from the facility development planning standpoint, and then into the budget, which really will answer the questions about, you know, what, that we need, that we need to answer. We asked for these, these questions to be answered, and Carrie's done a amazing job of putting that together, and everyone else inquiry. Joe and Colby, thank you, you guys. So, we can answer those questions today. So, do you want to move to the next part again?
Absolutely.
John, did your questions get answered?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So, the next piece on our agenda is actually, Superintendent, Premus Goldie's going to take over, but I'll just to introduce, we're discussing the 2022 Keep 39 options. And I just wanted to say, the administration has worked diligently to consider and review options for enrollment in Keep 39. And this is, what this is about is if Keep 39, if, if the board were to determine that the immediate pursuit of the two necessary construction projects was not possible. And so, you'll hear later in the SOC portion of the meeting, that we believe we can, we believe we can financially support the projects. And I'm going to let Carrie take, take over from here.
Thank you.
Do we need Colby and Joe still, or should we thank them and say goodbye? I don't think there's anything else in the, in this report that we need to...
Just one quick update. On the junior high, our next major milestone from a design standpoint will be coming around January 21st. So those at a minimum will be 50% construction documents, because I know we want to get, we want to get a real good handle on, on, on cost. That budget is tentatively slated to be completed second week of February. So the timing of that should work well with regards to the bid opening for Ramona and McKenzie. I know, and I, I think that's just going to be a, a critical piece to, to finalize from a hard cost standpoint. So the timing of when the, when the junior high budget is due versus that bid opening, that should work out well. One thing that we're currently working on is just equipment lead times. We've quite a bit of new equipment with long lead times that we're working with vendors right now to, to see what that threshold is. With kind of a late start here, from a design standpoint, a bid opening won't be happening until March sometime. So sometimes that gets a little tight, especially with board approval being worked into the, in the mix. So we're working to see what options we have to help expedite the equipment procurement. So at our, at our next meeting, I'll have more information with regards to what some of those options are.
Joe, you're referring to the HVAC?
Yes.
Yeah, the, yes, the air conditioning on the second floor.
So let me just kind of jump in. That really is more, goes back to the study that we did. I know we had identified doing the second floor, well, junior high was a priority to do the air conditioning. So it's going in and replacing unit vents for the classrooms, as well as adding a new chiller for the unit, too. So that's what Joe was talking about, where we're anticipating having our design drawings done, or 50% ready mid-January, so that he can get his first round of estimates in, in time for that February review. I'm sorry, I can't hear, someone has a question.
Said, "Thank you, Sandra."
Right, so thank you, Joe, and Colby and Sandra. I think that concludes our portion with you. We really appreciate you taking the time to join us today, thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Bye.
As Ellen was sharing, the administrative team was asked to go back and consider what would happen, develop a plan for how we would enroll our students in Keep 39 if construction were not pursued. And the board, the community might recall that, excuse me, the board is considering not only these two projects, but also the WJHS second-story air conditioning, and wanted to look at these all together. So there was a little bit of a, a push to try to get us to examine what might happen for Keep 39, if in fact those two construction projects were not pursued. So our principals took a close look at this, along with our central office team, to identify what options might exist, and then to evaluate those options. So we're here today to share some high-level summaries of what those options might be. Again, it is our perspective at this point, as you'll hear in the School Finance Committee portion of the meeting. We do believe we can financially support the projects at Ramona and McKenzie, and very much hope the board will allow us to pursue those, along with the second-story air conditioning at WJHS. But in the event that we're not able to pursue those or, or get those completed, we want to make sure that we have equitable access to the Keep 39 program for all students across the district. By equitable, I really mean that all students would have the opportunity to enroll, but if construction is not pursued, all students would not actually have a spot available, because there just simply wouldn't be enough square footage to offer those spots to every student. So what we have done is tried to look at, how can we make sure that students have the opportunity to participate in the lottery, and have an equitable opportunity to gain one of those spots, recognizing that not every student would be able to enroll. So I will just briefly talk everyone through. We do have Principal Anderson and Principal Nasiakos here with us today, who can also help to address any follow-up questions regarding these options. So again, with the goal of ensuring that all kindergarten students have equitable opportunity to enroll in the Keep 39 program, the administrative team developed and reviewed a variety of options. Each option was considered to evaluate feasibility, access, equitability, and impact. So we did look at a variety of options. I will say that the preferred option that we settled on, of course, outside of the option of, of pursuing construction, is really based on a couple of assumptions. First of all, that we have typical enrollment and sectioning for the fall. Obviously, this school year has looked very different, but if we have typical enrollment and sectioning, this, a couple of these other options could be available. We are assuming at this point, then, as I talk through these options, that Ramona and McKenzie construction would not be pursued. We're assuming that there's 80 to 96 students enrolled in kindergarten at each of the, at each of our four schools. And we're assuming essentially that Central and Harper have four classroom spaces for kindergarten, and McKenzie and Ramona have two classrooms each. So without construction, that's approximately what we can allocate at this point. Again, at any school in any given year, there may be an extra bubble, which would create some challenges. But these are the assumptions upon which we have built the options. So again, emphasizing that our, our first preferred, preferred option is to pursue the construction, to have that available by the fall, so that we can offer KEEP at each one of our schools. If that's not possible, what we think would be the best option is to make, take those four classrooms at Central and Harper each, and two classrooms at McKenzie and Ramona, and make sure that students have the opportunity to participate in lottery to access those programs. Essentially, it would mean that at Central and at Harper, there would be three classrooms each allocated for academic kindergarten with KEEP 39. Two of those classrooms would be allocated to the homeschool students. One of those classrooms would be allocated to students coming from the other school. So we would partner Central with McKenzie, we would partner Harper with Ramona, and essentially, taking the, the Central-McKenzie option, two of the classrooms at Central that are offering academic kindergarten with KEEP 39 would be for Central students, one would be for McKenzie students, and then at McKenzie, there would be one classroom that would offer two half-day academic kindergarten sections, and one classroom that would offer the academic kindergarten with KEEP 39. It sounds rather complicated, but essentially, what we're saying, then, is that each school population would have two half-day programs, each school population would have two half-day kindergarten programs with KEEP 39. So approximately half of the students across the district would have access to KEEP 39, and we would then offer a lottery for students to be chosen into that program. It would be a random selection lottery. That, the same would be true, then, of Harper in partnership with Ramona. A lottery would take place if the demand is greater than the spots available. We would anticipate that being the case. Homeschool KEEP 39 spots at Ramona and McKenzie would be allocated first to our kindergarten students, who have older siblings already attending those schools, and then the lottery would occur for all others. Children would attend academic kindergarten in KEEP 39 at the same school. So if, if you are a Ramona student attending Ramona, you would attend both at Ramona school. If you were lotteryed into one of the spots that's available at Harper, you would attend both at Harper. There certainly is impact of this option. First of all, all students would not have access to KEEP 39 across the district, because there are limited spots. Only about half of our kindergarten students would be able to enroll in the KEEP 39 program. It would be accessible across the district, but not all students would be able to enroll. Some, some less favorable impacts. Some students at Harper and Central would not have the opportunity to, to attend KEEP 39, as they may have expected. Some students at McKenzie and Ramona will need to attend Central and Harper respectively, in order to participate in KEEP 39. So there's definitely impact for each of the school populations. And we recognize that there will be disappointment experienced by those who don't get a spot through the lottery. That uncertainty, we expect, will lead to some frustration, and, and that would be, that would be unfortunate. But when, when we only have so many spots, that, that would be a necessary outcome, we think, there. And some students will only have access to the half-day academic kindergarten. This is worrisome for all, but especially so for families at Central and Harper, who may have assumed that they would get first priority at their homeschool. Instead, we would be making those spots available to everyone. And so it, it will be impactful to the McKenzie and Ramona families, who need to, to go to a different school. Impactful for the Central and Harper families, who may have expected to get a spot and, and won't have one available to them. Again, our goal would be that everyone has the opportunity to participate in the lottery, but at the end of the day, not everyone would get a spot. And so we do want to be really transparent and upfront with recognizing that there would be some frustration around that. We think this is the best option to make the program available and to keep transitions between the kindergarten program and the KEEP 39 program as minimal as possible, but we do realize that, that there would be disappointment here if that were the option pursued. Obviously, if the pandemic continues, there, there may be some greater space needs than what we're currently talking about, so we would need to consider that. An alternate, far less preferred option would be just to keep all kindergarten students at their homeschool. That, though, would mean that our Ramona and, and McKenzie families would not have the same level of access as our other families to the KEEP 39 program. So that would be less favorable than the first option I, I described. The final and least favorite option is simply not to off, keep, offer KEEP 39 programming next year. We would prefer not to do that. We see that as a significant step back for the district. And yet, if the pandemic continues and construction is not pursued, we do think that we would have to, we would have to consider that, at least, as an option. Not our favorite option by far, but, but an option nonetheless. So, again, we have, we have worked through these options, we think that they are viable. Our recommendation would be to pursue construction. We think financially, we can afford to do so, and that space will be much needed and very appreciated at each of our schools. Yet, we recognize the board's direction to develop some options. So the board has been given a few more details than what I've quickly tried to summarize here today, but we're happy to answer any questions, and again, principals are here to help as well.
I'm going to say one thing first, and then I'll call in everyone, but I would add that, I mean, the first option, I would say for the families at Ramona and McKenzie, that it's exactly the same kind of disappointment about not attending your homeschool as it is for the expect, the expectation of being able to be at your homeschool, because they have been expecting to have this built for the past several years now. So the, the, their disappointment would be the same as the families who were expecting to have their kids attend at their homeschool if we did a lottery by that first method. I just wanted to clarify that, because I think, I think it's an equal, it's equal across the board. I think you've done a very good job of making it very equitable in that scenario, but...
Disappointment is equitable across all school populations.
Equitable across all schools, so...
Agreed, agreed.
So I think Frank was per se, Frank and, or Erin, I don't know.
Well, I didn't even think, I don't think I raised my hand. I, I do have something to say, but Frank, Frank definitely is ahead of me, because I don't think I raised my hand, sorry.
First off, I, I appreciate the, the significant effort that it took to put together this plan. I, I think the, the, the thing that, that really strikes is that what we decided to do when we started up KEEP is popular enough that this becomes important. If the program hadn't been working, if the interest wasn't there, there would have been a lot of easier options here. So the, so number one, I want to acknowledge that the, the KEEP program serves a, a really vital purpose in our community, and that's why we had to have this conversation. I also appreciate the, the scenarios. When we decided that we were going to phase in the building of these things, we, we made a, a promise to the McKenzie and Ramona schools that they would not be left behind. They knew that they weren't going to be exactly the same, but we promised them that they wouldn't be left out indefinitely. So it was important that there's a plan that was put together that, as much as possible, makes it equal. Obviously, the construction wasn't done there. It's going to be different if we had to do this. But this plan, I think, recognized that and makes it as equitably unhappy as a... as was mentioned earlier for everybody, which is really the most we could do if we had to go this route. I think it's important when we make decisions in the finance committee that it's not an all-or-nothing choice, and that's why this was so important. I think when we get to the financing, there's been some big changes in the last two, three months that have pushed this into the background. But if it had been in the foreground, the work that you did would have given us the ability to have an informed discussion about how we spend our money and how we make sure that all the children in all of the schools are treated equitable. So I appreciate the effort, I appreciate the plan. I agree that it's as good as we could come up with. And hopefully, when we get to the finance section, we'll decide we don't need this. But that doesn't mean it wasn't important. It was important to have this option so we could make an informed decision, and I think you did a good job on it, so thank you.
Frank, Erin?
Tying into what Frank just ended his comment with, mine is more of a comment, which is, you know, pending our next agenda item and the five-year financial projections, this is probably moot for me because I'm leaning towards being in favor of us doing it this summer. But when I read the packet over the weekend, I, when I read your proposals, I was just, I mean, I was alone in my kitchen, but I was like, this is brilliant. I thought they were so creative and really sought to address an equity issue with the different district or the different schools in our district. And I just, I thank you for spending the time for doing this.
Yeah, I will commend our principals and assistant principals for their hard work on putting together the plans, so thank you.
Anyone else? Well, with that, I think that is all of our items for the FTC. So I'm gonna turn it back over to President Pabes.
Thank you very much. Tying into that report, the next report is the School Finance Committee items. I turn the meeting over to SFC Chair John Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Pabes. So I think the, the main item that we're gonna discuss is a five-year financial projection that the administration prepared, which I think is very good and compelling. And, and frankly, I should turn it over to Carrie or Cory, I think, to talk about it. Whichever one of you would like to go through it.
Happy to introduce Cory to give the board an overview of the five-year financial projections. Thank you, Cory, for putting this together.
All right, so with the five-year projections, I'm gonna walk through a couple of things. Some of the assumptions, I'm not gonna read through all of them, but I, I wanna point out the, the highlights. And we'll talk, we'll kind of have a working document of our five years' worth of capital projects over the summer and then share with you the, kind of the end result. We'll focus on the operating funds, but in everybody's packet, you have
Excuse me, Cory? Can I just ask a little louder?
Okay.
Thank you.
Included in everybody's packet is stuff by fund as well. But just for sake of time today, we're gonna pass on that. And as we've already talked about, we do believe that both of the scenarios that I'm gonna share with everybody includes the ability to handle the three projects for next summer. So on the assumption side, you know, for, for a district like thirty-nine, the, the big thing within any assumptions as we kind of work our way through is always going to be what happens with, you know, on the, on the revenue side, property taxes are about eighty-four percent. And on the, on the expense side, it's what happens with salaries and benefits. So the, the first section is just that, you know, we already know that for nineteen, we had a two-point-three percent CPI. Where we're at right now in the, in the current year is we're at one-point-three percent. But if you look back over the last several years, typically you see a small decrease of point-two, point-three percent in those last couple of months, and I've built that into the forecast. And then for the, for the remaining out-years, we've included the, an estimate at two percent, which is, which is what the, the Fed is targeting, their current target for long-term. Similar to when we approved the tax levy last month, we've built in fourteen-point-two million of new growth, which for every million generates roughly twenty-nine thousand dollars of additional tax, property tax revenue for the district. The property tax collections are set at a, based upon a, roughly a decade of historical data, a net collection rate of ninety-eight-point-six percent over the five-year period. Things like local revenue are based upon the current fee structures that we have. And, you know, kind of a newer big thing is the KEEP program. We've, we've projected for twenty-two, one-point-six million in KEEP revenue, and then every year thereafter is one-point-eight. For those out-years, that would be, you know, roughly where our upper limits of student enrollment for those programs. For things like evidence-based funding and, and transportation funding and federal aid, it comes at the state and federal level, including replacement taxes, we've set those flat all the way through the, the five-year forecast. On the expenditure side, as I, as I mentioned, you know, the biggest thing is what happens with our salaries and benefits. And so for each, each group, you know, being consistent with what we've done in the past, each of the two bargaining units, if, if a known amount is in there, it's included. The rest of the years are, are subject to, to negotiation. We, for, for the teachers, since we have the no number of staff retirements, those have been included as well. The exempted administrative staff salaries are based upon the CPI estimates that we, that we've included above. Another big component is what happens with healthcare costs. That is, is in there at five percent per year. And then just below that, we have what happens on the expenditure side related to the KEEP program. And so the, this chart of, you know, by year, what, what might the KEEP program cost the district? We're looking at for next year, one-point-four million, and then one-point-three thereafter next year, being a little higher just due to the fact that we would be creating some additional classrooms that we don't currently have within the district and needing to get those with their own supplies and furniture to get them up and running. And then a lot of our non-salary and benefit expenditures, we're looking at, you know, two or three percent in supplies and purchase services, you know, across the board through, through the remaining years of the forecast. This chart shows, you know, how we anticipate spending. Some of our construction dollars over, over the next few years, we have categories for health, life, safety, the KEEP programs, roofs and boilers at, at a few different schools, unit replacement, some window projects, and then, of course, large space air conditioning at multiple buildings. And then the last thing was just the special ed. Tuition costs expected to grow at a three-percent rate. Next thing I want to show everyone, this is kind of, kind of referenced earlier. This is our, kind of our draft capital projects timeline. You know, one of the things I just wanted to point out, so if it's in green, that's, you know, stuff that's in this year that we've, you know, a lot of those projects are already done. And the bid has been approved. The items in yellow are the ones where we are working on the architectural design. And you'll see there's the three projects, as I mentioned a little bit ago. The, the amounts included in here are the amounts from last, from last month's budget update. And then for each of the, the future years, you know, we have several life safety projects for roofs, boilers, windows, unit vents, and large space air conditioning. The one thing I would point out for any of the things that would fall from the summer of twenty-two to twenty-five projects is, you know, this is really a working document and, you know, something that we would, you know, continually review and think about what, what's the most important and what's the biggest need as we approach these summers, much like we would have done, you know, leading up to the school year. So that takes us to, you know, how, how does this ultimately, you know, once you put it in and you work through the forecast, what, what is the end result of all these assumptions and, and how do we stay, how do we stand? All right. So what you're looking at now is the operating funds with the assumption that for, for next school year, things go back to what we would, we would consider normal. So I think with any five-year projection, the, the years that are closer or, you know, much more relevant and have a much bigger focus. So as I look at project year twenty-two, we see that even with tackling the, the three projects, and, and going back to kind of a normal operating environment, we would be looking at ending with around a forty-four percent fund balance. And you see that it remains, you know, very consistent throughout the remainder of the years. Then, as I flip to the, kind of the alternative scenario is what happens if we need to operate into a COVID environment for, for another year? You know, one thing to keep in mind, so just to kind of jump straight to, to the bottom, for fiscal year twenty-two, you see that the ending fund balance is about twenty-seven-point-two million or just forty-and-a-half percent. You know, as, now that we're four and a, five-and-a-half months into, you know, a fiscal year with, with COVID, you know, the one thing I, I do feel confident about is that operating in a COVID environment is about a, for us, as we're doing things now, is about a two-million-dollar, you know, like hit to our, to our operating fund balance. You know, I'd say probably seventy percent of that is on the expenditure side and maybe thirty percent of that is just reduced revenues of operating in kind of a different, a different world. So in this scenario, what it, you know, the thing I like to see about it is, yeah, the, the fund balance numbers are a little bit lower. However, it, it still incorporates those same three projects for, for the summer, and it still allows us to be above our forty percent threshold. And, and simply the only adjustments between the two scenarios is really just adding that, you know, roughly two million to a few different bucket areas. You know, there's always other options as you get closer to tweak and refine things even more. So this next, this next graphic, one of the things I just wanted to point out, and I think it's really helpful is it, as we think about, you know, kind of where the district has been from operating funds and kind of where it's going, is, you know, the blue is the revenues, the greens expenditures, just having that nice trend where every year revenues are, you know, a little bit higher than expenditures. The one exception is you look at, you know, the previous five years and the future projection five years is the outlier of this year with the additional COVID expenditures. The only year that has a, you know, the expenditures, you know, expected to be a little bit higher than revenues. The remainder, the remainder of the information in the board's packet is, you know, just the same thing as you saw with the operating funds, just broken out by fund. At this point, if anyone has any questions or comments, be happy to answer anything that anybody wants to know. Lisa?
So, thank you for this. This information is, is very helpful, especially, I think, answering the question, what does COVID cost the district? So I'm also happy to see that we're able to weather the storm. Do you predict, I haven't been following what's happening, I don't know if you know the, the answer to this, but will there be any way to recoup some of the two million from either state or federal reimbursements? Or is that just a not realistic?
I mean, I think, you think, if you go back to March, I mean, the reality is, we know we're, we're, we're able to get about eighty grand from the state. That was allocated based upon, through the CARES. That was allocated based upon, at least in Illinois, how like much Title I money or low-income money you get. So naturally, we, we got a very small amount compared to some districts. The other, one of the other things is FEMA, and so we haven't gotten to the point where they've, we've been told, but I, I personally would not expect very much money. The one thing that I, I know Jane and I have been on calls with the consultant that, that the state, the county had, and just reading what a lot of other business managers have said that had, they had a lot more that they couldn't, you know, potentially claim than us. And it's just a whole lot of no. I mean, it's, you know, people are saying, this is all the stuff that we spent, and they're just like, no, no. And so there, there could be some stuff, some of the equipment things that we, that we got. But even then, ironically, what's been happening is they say no, and it's not been applied consistently across the country. And so you find out that like, oh, like we bought those electrostatic sprayers and some UVC lights. You know, some districts might get them somewhere in the country, others might not. And so then, if you're one of the unlucky ones that they get no, then you find yourself in a lengthy appeals process. And you say, hey, well, we heard, you know, we only know that because the consultant we were talking to told us that. Like, if you find yourself in this, apply. So in the grand scheme, no, because like the bulk of the money that we're spending or that, that's either lost revenue, like we would never get reimbursed for that. And then on the, the salary side, no, and then even then, the money that we're looking to get back, they drastically, FEMA drastically reduced what they're willing to cover after September fifteenth. So really, our hope for what we might get is gonna be in that March through like mid-September. They're really pulling back, and it just feels like, as I kind of surveyed landscape, like at least as it relates to FEMA, schools really didn't get a lot of help. So now, could that change in another round of stimulus, especially if it, if this environment is expected to last, you know, a while longer? Yeah, but I, I don't, I'm not holding my breath, I'll say that.
I would agree with Cory. I don't think we should plan for any kind of additional dollars coming by way of assistance to our school district. I think that eighty thousand dollars approximately that we received as part of the CARES grant is probably the beginning and end of that.
Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I've, I've got a couple things. So first of all, thanks, thanks a lot. I've got a question, I've got a couple of points I want to make, and I've got three requests, so I'll run through them quickly. First of all, how much do we have in the budget, if anything, for the testing that we're considering doing?
In the, in the current year budget?
Yeah.
So based, like in our current year budget, we've got stuff, you know, things for supplies and different purchase services. There is some, some money for that. Was that something that we, you know, planned for like a large scale at the beginning of the year back in early August? The answer is no. But we, like most things, like kind of always reviewing where we're at and evaluating whether we can, you know, take stuff on, so.
I just want to be, make sure, because when the board looks in a few minutes at the testing and sees that it's, I mean, it's, you know, multiple tens of thousands of dollars each time we do it. So it's, it's, I, I personally think it's a great idea, but I think we need to have that in our minds as we think through the, the budget. Great, the other, I, I wanted to make two points, which is, one, that we have had a process of having guardrails on our, on our budgets. I think personally that one of the things we did previously that has worked out very well is that we put in a lower guardrail that gave us some room, right? So we, we thought at the time Right? So we, we thought at the time, what happens if there's a pension cost shift onto the district? That has not happened. However, COVID did happen. I think one of the, the, the things that has been, has worked out well for us is that because of that sort of planning about what could happen in the future and providing ourselves a buffer, I anticipate we will be able to do the keep 39 work. And also handle COVID at the same time. So I think that's a great positive. The, it, and that leads to one of my requests, which is I'm a big fan personally of the chart that shows how the fund balance goes and shows the two red lines. And I'd love to see it come back. I think it's a helpful way to think about the, the big picture. The second, so that's one of my requests. The second point that I wanted to make is that you, you mentioned at the end and absolutely correctly so that we have this chart that has revenues slightly higher than expenses going off in the future. I want to make a really clear point for the people watching who may say, why would revenues have to always be a little bit above expenses? That's taxpayer dollars. And the reason is it's consistent with having guardrails on the fund balances. Every year our operating expenses go up. That means that our fund balance as a percentage of operating expense has to go up to stay at a flat fund balance. I said that a little bit wrong. To stay at a flat fund balance for operating expense, our revenues have to outstrip our expenses just a little bit. But I want to be clear that the only reason why we want to have our revenues slightly off from our expenses is so that we keep enough money in our fund balance to weather these things that we're talking about. And that, and to weather, you know, operational fluctuations. So I don't want people to come away thinking that it is our goal to build fund balances. And that goes back to my request of, you know, let's make sure that we're keeping track of what the fund balances are and, and what our guardrails are. And then the only other request I would have, and this is sort of a, a long term, this is not for the near term, but if you think about making these reports in the futures, in the future, I think it's extremely helpful to have a sense of where the biggest sensitivities are. So for instance, our collection rate varies a little bit from year to year. But the amount it varies doesn't change our budget by more than a few, you know, thousands, maybe tens of thousands of dollars, I think. That's, that's what I believe is true. Our new property growth can change pretty significantly from year to year. We don't have any control over it and it's always an estimate. And so when we're making that estimate, it's helpful to sort of say, oh, but, you know, the highest it's been over the past 10 years or the lowest it's been or one standard you get, whatever it is, so that we have a sense of what variability might come from the assumptions that we have to make. And I totally understand that we have no choice but to make assumptions. But seeing that variability is very helpful. And I think the last thing I would say on that is in the past, we have used Bloomberg estimates for CPI. Now we're using the, the Fed target rate. I think it's, that, that plays into my request about sensitivities. Nobody knows what the CPI will be in the future. That's a fair point. But having a sort of sense of if, if for instance Bloomberg is significantly off from what the, what the Fed is targeting, that can actually have quite a big impact on our budget. So it's helpful to be able to see those different views and understand the, the variability that that would create. Is that all? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Oh, go ahead Frank.
Yeah, I, I agree that to the points in particular, one was this is well done and thank you. The other is I also missed that, that chart with the upper and lower bounds. And I think we need to, to bring that back into the, into the cycle. I also wanted to to point out that these numbers fit the, the targets. You know, we get down to 43, 44, which is close, but not, you know, scary close to our, to our target. But I just also wanted to point out that three months ago, our estimates were that we'd be down to like 39%. And that is, the reason we have a 40 number is to, to try to bounce off of it, not to go below it. So the fact that we were able to understand where we were, that we found some money, we sharpened the pencils, all the things that you did to get us to this point is why we have the flexibility to have the discussions. And if we hadn't found that money, we would have been, you know, two of these five years, we would have been right at 40 or slightly below. And then we would have had to have different type of discussions. So I'm glad we're at where we are. But that's why we were looking at this closely is, is you know, 3% is not that hard for these numbers to change based on things that we don't control. And luckily we were able to, to be on the positive side of those 3% instead of the negative side. So I'm, I'm glad that this gives us a starting point for our discussions.
Anybody else have, would like to make comments?
All right. I, I actually would like to make a comment. I think this is great work, Corey and Kerry and the other people in the administration that helped. We really do appreciate this is a tough decision. This is a lot of money, right? Spent during the COVID crisis, which is also expensive and has lots of other costs that we may or may not fully understand at this point. I think for me, you know, my perspective is this is important capital expenditure that should be made to increase the capacity of the district to do its job, right? Educate the kids. And I'm looking at the most frankly, I've, I've come down to the most important point for me is item 10 in the expenditures memo that talks about future expenditures. And these don't look like strategic expenditures to me. Large place, large space air conditioning and roofs and boilers. I would think that if we made a big mistake and voted for this and the revenue turns bad or whatever, things cost more, we could adjust those items in the future. So, so anyway, that's, that's where I'm, I'm at personally on this. And I do, and I really appreciate the effort that went into, I think, getting all of us to a point where we're much better prepared for this kind of decision. Ellen, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, the air conditioners.
Yeah.
We, once we decide, we can't, that's something that we're already behind on, just the second floor.
Yeah.
If you're referring to that. And that was something we had discussed, we've discussed for a really long time, the second floor air conditioners at WJHS is a quality of education issue. Like as much as keep 39 is an educational issue. It's almost impossible. It's so hot on the second floor.
Yeah.
That it is, I mean, we've discussed this a lot. So I'm just in terms of lumping it with the other items that, you know, when you were kind of I'm not in disagreement with some of, most of your comments.
My characterization.
Yes, your characterization. Thank you. That was a good one.
Yes.
But I wanted to separate that from the rest of the items because that one item, the, the air conditioning, which we're, which we were, which we're bidding on and behind in planning on at the moment, I think, I believe is part of this plan right now, the, the bidding plan right now.
Yes, I think to be clear, I don't think we're behind in planning for that. I think the second story, air conditioning and the Mackenzie and Ramona projects are the next projects up. I think John, maybe I misunderstood, but I think what you were referring to is those projects that we're looking forward to two, three or four years down the line.
Okay, that meant that one.
Yeah, if financially things were to take a, a turn different from what is projected right now, we then, the board would be able to make a decision different for those projects that are two, three or four years down the line. It's really important. I think the board does an outstanding job of planning far in advance and making sure that they're aware of what levers they can pull if projections change for one reason or another. 12 months ago, we would not have anticipated the pandemic. And yet we've been able to adjust very effectively financially to that and make sure that we're able to continue with our core business.
Yep.
So the five year projections, there, there's no action needed now, right? This is a discussion and I just want to say we have Dr. Ed Campbell on our Zoom now. So I want to understand from the board, can we end this discussion or do we want to just take a pause and come back to it?
I think we're done.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Fabs.
So then I am going to move us to the strategy committee. And I turn the meeting over to strategy committee chair Mark Steen with the caveat that we should probably just pivot immediately to Dr. Campbell.
If, if I could do a brief introduction, we are so pleased to have Dr. Ed Campbell here with us today to provide the board with an overview of safeguard surveillance testing protocol and procedures. We have had a team working diligently, a subcommittee of the metrics advisory team working to help us evaluate the options for a surveillance screening program to implement here in the Willmet Public Schools. We've looked at a variety of options and have landed finally on safeguard surveillance LLC to assist us with this option. So Dr. Ed Campbell is here with us to provide the board with an overview of the surveillance screening program that is recommended by the COVID testing subcommittee of the metrics advisory team. The program, this is the program that's being implemented at Nutria. So some of us have familiarity with that. It is a saliva-based screening program. It has also been implemented in La Grange 102 with really good success. And Dr. Campbell will speak to that briefly as well. The test is not diagnostic, but rather intended to serve as a rapid test that can provide surveillance and add an additional mitigation strategy to identify and isolate asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic individuals. As a note, the district continues to experience success relative to its internal metrics and mitigated, mitigated risk of virus transmission within our schools. While that is the case, there remains a concern that high levels of external community spread may increase the risk of positive cases within our schools. So for this reason, during times of significant community spread, screening, testing is recommended to accomplish a variety of things. The four primary goals really are to identify and isolate potential asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic cases of COVID among students and staff, to provide students and staff with additional screening tools to further mitigate the risk of cases entering our schools, really to rid it, to mitigate that risk of exposure, of transmission and of quarantine, especially during times of significant community spread, to assist with screening and to reduce the overall rates of COVID-19 within our community by isolating cases. And finally, our sincere hope is that it will help to reduce the need for school closures or for classrooms or individuals to go on quarantine. So we're really excited about this program. It has been a heavy lift and will continue to be if the board decides to approve our launch of this. I will turn it over to Dr. Campbell to provide the board with an overview of the program and to answer the board's questions regarding the program. Dr. Campbell, thank you for joining us today. I think, Dr. Campbell, you're on mute.
Yeah, so thank you very much. That was an outstanding introduction. I probably will say many of the similar things over the next few minutes. So you'll bear with me if I'm a little bit repetitive. But so what I'm going to talk to you about today, let's see, there we go, is really the thinking behind the, what we've done in 102. And just to briefly introduce myself in a slightly different context, I'm also the vice president of the Illinois 102 Board of Education. We have a K through 12 district. And I guess the reason I'm talking to you today about this is I picked a weird time to be a virologist on a school board. And really everything that I'll talk to you about is really using the, the program that we've set up in District 102 to do this same type of testing as a model. So to just, you know, briefly introduce some of the ideas of why we're looking to do surveillance testing in school. It's really because, you know, the value of identifying individuals and removing them from the classroom setting is really the, one of the key parts of a mitigation strategy. And this has been highlighted recently, specifically talking about schools in the New England Journal of Medicine, but also from the American Association of Medical Colleges with really the idea being that if we're going to move the needle at all, the way to do that is to test your way out of it, if you will. To just briefly introduce some of the ideas of tests and sensitivity to this group and explain, you know, a little bit about what drove our thinking. If you look on the left side of this slide, you'll see really yes.
Just one second. The, the view on your slide is, we're seeing the speaker view. And sort of the slide is covered up by a
Of course. Hold on, hold on. I can, I can change that all around. Thank you very much for letting me know. All right. So now what I'll do is I'll share.
Now it's, it's gone.
Yep, yep, yep. No, that's all part of the, the magic. Hold on. Sorry about that. Is that better?
That is much better. Thank you.
All right. Very good.
Apologize for the interruption.
Thank you. And whether it's to highlight my presentational competence or ask any other questions you have, please feel free to interrupt and I'm happy to take any questions you have right as you have them. So if you look over at the left hand, left side of this slide, you'll see two things. Number one is a measurement of the positivity of people that did test positive by PCR to illustrate the distribution of viral loads within people that test positive. And what you can see here is that a small fraction of people, usually around 10 to 20% of people that test positive have a much higher viral load than the rest of the individuals that test positive. And this is consistent with epidemiology that shows that around 60 to 80% of new infections are caused by a relatively small subset, 10 or 20% of infected people because they're so infectious. These are the so-called super spreaders, if you will. And this has caused a lot of the people that do, you know, some of the best thinking and are leaders in the wor- in the world of epidemiology, like Michael Mina at Harvard or Roy Parker at Colorado, to address the fact that really the way America has addressed testing has missed the mark a little bit. Because their argument is that America has put all of their eggs, if you will, in the sensitivity basket. But given the way that this virus is operating and spreading, the data really say that we should be emphasizing cost and speed, the, how fast a test is turned around over sensitivity. Because what the data show is that really all, there's different sensitivities of every test, to be sure. But what's clear is that all of the ways of testing are capable of identifying these individuals that have the much higher viral loads. And where the different test sensitivities differ is really in their ability to diagnose people that are generally all thought to be outside of the infectious period anyway. And so this is a, a little graph that I've taken from a, a bit of a nerdy resource this week in virology. But if you look over here on the right, there are, were articles in the New York Times really making or addressing this same point that are much more accessible to the lay reader. But again, that point is that the test sensitivity is certainly something to consider. But the primary thing to consider in the context of COVID-19 infection and spread is the cost and the speed of the test because that dictates how many people you can test and how often you can test them. And so I was showing the previous slide before this paper was released from Michael Mina and Roy Parker. And again, these are epidemiologists that model the spread of viruses and work on implementing testing strategies. And what they saw when they modeled the spread of COVID-19 in something similar to a high school is that if they model the test with a limit of detection of around 10 to the third copies, which is right around what PCR is, or something which is very much like our test RT lamp, which has a limit of detection of 10 to the fifth copies, there was really no change in that R coefficient that I think everyone is a little bit more familiar with in 2020 than they were in 2019. R is really a coefficient that reflects how many people are infected by an infectious individual. And what you can see is that really the frequency of testing, more than the sensitivity of the test, drove differences in that R variable. And so when I talk about differences in sensitivity, what do I mean by that? So in a paper that developed a test that's very similar, but not identical to our own, that was published online a few months ago, what they did was they compared a set of positive samples and asked, were these samples and asked, were these samples picked up by a test such as RT-LAMP, which I'll talk about in a moment, or PCR? And what you can see is that samples that had a relatively low threshold cycle, CQ, which means that there was much more virus in those samples, a test like RT-LAMP is easily able to pick those up. And just like every other test that's not PCR, there ends up being some very, very low levels of virus that PCR can detect, but RT-LAMP cannot. But generally speaking, the higher the viral load in a patient, the more likely RT-LAMP, or really any other test, is to pick up the, in our case, the viral genome, but in other cases antigens, in that individual sample. So, how does our test compare to other tests that you might have heard of, right? And so, probably the test that you've heard of is a PCR-based test. And so, this is certainly, in terms of the test itself, the gold standard test that's out there. It's highly sensitive. It's quantitative. It's comparably expensive, for a reason I'll explain in a moment. And the other problem right now with PCR tests is there probably isn't enough reagent to perform this test in a surveillance level in the world because of how much of it is being used in diagnostic tests and other things like that. But the short version is, is the original input amount of viral RNA is converted into DNA, and then it's amplified, so that eventually this amplification leads to a signal that's detected on a PCR machine. And the number of cycles that has to occur prior to this signal being detected tells you how much material was there in the first place. So, it's both highly sensitive and quantitative. And this amplification is driven by something called primers or probes that amplify specific regions of the genome. So, RT-LAMP is a very similar test in that it also uses primers or probes to amplify regions of the genome, in this case into a large piece of DNA that we can detect. It is less sensitive than PCR. It tends to give us a binary readout of yes or no, with the primary advantage as being that it's relatively cheap. It's fast. It takes about half the time to run compared to a PCR run. And the other advantage is that as a non-diagnostic test, we can use this test at a low cost to identify findings of potential clinical significance. So, what do I mean when I say "non-diagnostic test"? So, if we're to compare the tests that we're running in 102 or for NutriR or any of the other districts that we're working with to a test like Saliva Direct, or maybe in the months coming up here, Illinois Shield. So, these PCR-based tests are diagnostic tests, which means that if a person is positive via this test, they can be immediately diagnosed with COVID-19. And that's because these tests have something called an emergency use authorization. So, the upside for a diagnostic test like this is that you can diagnose an individual as being positive for COVID-19. The downside is that to run this test, you have to do that in something called a CLIA-certified lab environment. And this, there is a cost associated with this. Very, you know, there's a tremendous amount of regulatory paperwork that goes into being certified as a diagnostic lab facility. And because of this, a CLIA-certified lab doesn't really do anything that I'm aware of for $11. As a non-diagnostic test, what we can use this test for in the context of surveillance is to inform individuals, not that they're COVID-19 positive, but when there's a positive in a result like, in a test like this, then participants are notified of a finding of potential clinical significance and then referred to a physician or diagnostic test. And this is important, and I'll bring this up in the next slide. The value here is that in a surveillance mechanism like this, this does not require a CLIA-certified lab to run the original surveillance test. If you look at the workflow of the test, they're virtually identical, with the difference being that when we have our saliva samples in a tube, we heat and activate them before we ever open them in our laboratory environment, and then we mix them with a buffer that other tests tend to add before the heat and activation. But otherwise, they're fundamentally similar in terms of the workflow. And again, the difference here being that when we have a finding of potential clinical significance, we have to refer that individual to a diagnostic test. And so, the reason for that is stated here, which was some recent guidance that was provided by CMS. And if you don't know CMS, they're basically the parent body of the FDA who enforces things like CLIA certification and performing tests in the environment in which they're supposed to occur. And so, normally, like a lot of things, things would be different if the year wasn't 2020. Normally, in a surveillance type of study or surveillance protocol, such as the one we're doing, it's not acceptable to provide patient-specific results, meaning that we can't inform individual participants of their status, the outcome of the test. But because it's 2020 and because of COVID-19, CMS has stated that neither they nor the state survey agencies on their behalf will cite non-CLIA-certified labs for informing participants of the outcomes of these tests as long as we're not diagnosing anyone with anything. So, as long as all presumptive positives or inconclusives are referred to a CLIA-certified laboratory test or a physician, then CMS and its agencies underneath it are okay with us operating in this fashion. So, what does the workflow of our test look like? So, these are actually pictures from the Science Center in District 102 that we've popped up in. We have a slightly different lab environment now at our new facility where we've greeted with Safeguard. There's less parrots and turtles and other things that make this place very charming. But the workflow is really the same. So, individuals are given small tubes with a barcoded label on it. And when a sample comes into the lab, we use a barcode scanner to scan that into a spreadsheet that we actually got from IDPH. Then, the samples are heated and activated in a heat block, like I showed you, and then they're assembled into a 96-well rack like this. And small amounts of each sample are transferred into a 96-well plate that have a buffer that stabilizes the RNA. And then, once you're in a 96-well plate like this, for lack of a better term, here in my world, we can start moving these samples around with multi-channel pipettes to ultimately put a small amount of these saliva samples in with the RT-LAMP reaction mixture, and we run that in a PCR machine. We're not running a, we're not running a PCR per se. That involves cycling the temperatures between different levels in each cycle, and a RT-LAMP is simply keeping it at a constant temperature for 30 minutes while reading fluorescence. But we can use a PCR machine in the same way here, and we do that because it's really the best way to do the test as we've looked at different ways of doing it. And so, this is the typical outcome of an assay. What we do, also, I'll point out that in this plate, you'll notice that there's two empty holes here. In every plate, we run a negative control to make sure there's no contamination of our primer stock. But we also, more importantly, run a positive control where we actually spike in a small amount of COVID RNA to make sure that the reaction mixture that's in this plate was competent and capable of detecting COVID RNA if it was there in that plate on that day. So, we run every sample twice with COVID-specific primers. And so, here's an example of a good day at a 96-well plate, where you can see that there is a positive reaction coming from the positive control well, and none of the other samples being examined in this particular plate were positive. So, this positive control indicates that the reaction was effective. It's a very reliable assay. We've, you know, if that positive control didn't come up, we'd have to fail the whole batch of tests. But I think at this point, after at least 25,000 tests, we haven't had to fail a reaction yet, or a set of reactions. If we see two positive results, this leads us to reach out to the district nurse or employee designated to receive the contact from Safeguard. If we see one positive result, we were rerunning that with a number of different COVID-specific primer probes in an RT-LAMP test. But more recently, we've started using a confirmatory PCR test for samples that were ambiguous in the first run. Anything that looks at us funny, we chase down with a non-diagnostic PCR test. And any additional positive result leads us to reach out to the nurse contact. This has, you know, collectively, I think this workflow of running it in duplicate and chasing anything that looks questionable down with a PCR or additional testing has allowed us to have a really low false positive rate. And I'm using the word "false positive" here, but it's probably unfair to say "false positive." What we really mean is the rate at which something that's positive in our test is confirmed positive by a subsequent diagnostic test. Because of the difference, differences in the diagnostic tests that are out there, which range from very sensitive PCR to antigen tests, which are a little bit less sensitive than RT-LAMP, combined with the fact that these samples aren't being taken on the same day, it's probably unfair to call something like that a false positive. But in either case, in the vast majority of time, as you can see, when we indicate a person should go for a diagnostic test, so far, we're very, very accurate with our referrals. So, there's a couple of ways that schools have set up to do these kinds of collections. So, in 102, when we launched, we had an onsite collection where we popped up in tents, and nurses and other people came to help us collect these samples. This is perhaps a little bit of a dated slide, because this would look less appealing in the winter months. But even if it weren't, what most schools have done or taken to doing is sending kids home with students or teachers for them to bring back to school on a designated day. And the reason for that is, of all the bad breaks COVID has given us, the one that it really seems to have gone in our direction, if you will, is that the virus is preposterously stable in a saliva sample over time. What they did in this Yale study, the Saliva Direct paper, if you will, they took positive saliva samples and either ran them right away or put them in the refrigerator for degrees Celsius or room temperature, or even 30 degrees Celsius, and looked to see if they could still detect that RNA a week later. So, seven days under those conditions. And what they observed is that these incubations didn't do anything to reduce the sensitivity. And if anything, it might have increased the sensitivity, probably because the human RNA was very much degraded under these incubation conditions, and the sample was left only with the COVID RNA. But that's more of a scientific aside. What this definitely means is that a participant, a student or a teacher, can put a tube of saliva in their backpack the night before they're going to school, if they're likely to forget, or the morning right before they leave, and hand it in at school, and the school can bring it to us that day. And there's really no concern with the chain of custody of the sample or the sample going bad, you know, compared to, you know, maybe some other issues that are associated with other types of samples. So, what do we do and what do the schools that we work with need to do? So, because we need to ensure HIPAA and FERPA compliance, every tube that we receive is really just a barcoded tube. And for that reason, and for insurance reasons on our end as well, we could never have a list of names that link individual participants to individual barcodes, and we don't want it. And so, what we need to do is partner with the districts or schools that we're working with so that they can create a list of, that links every barcode that you develop to every participant, so that when we reach out to the employee that's been designated to receive that information and say, "sample number 2342978 had a finding of potential clinical significance," that then you can reach out to that person. Obviously, these, this type of information is typically best stored on the same kind of servers that all districts have to maintain records of what students have asthma, for example, or allergies. And so, in those two ways, you know, we don't make the little kits that go home, but at this point, we've helped enough districts through it where we can provide you with the tubes that you'll put the labels on, as well as instructions to making the labels to put on the tubes and do a pilot to make sure that all of that is working smoothly. But that's one of the things that is really on the district to do for the reasons I've just stated. And then, the other component that needs to, the other box that needs to be checked is that the district or school we're working with needs to obtain consent from all participants that just states they understand that they're providing saliva. It's, you know, under the conditions that they're going to receive the information back to them and that everyone understands what everyone is participating in, for obvious reasons. And, you know, finally, I will just add that, you know, it's important to also realize that I think this is a really important part of a mitigation strategy, but it's not, you know, it doesn't replace the need for other layers of a mitigation strategy. And in the context of having this in play in a number of districts, what, it is really important to make sure that people and the participants realize that this doesn't mean that these other mitigation strategies, like masks or distancing, can be ignored or replaced in a school setting. But it does make the collective mitigation strategy stronger. And I guess with that, I will stop sharing my screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Board members have questions?
Thank you for an understandable presentation, which on a topic like this is always important. I had a couple of quick questions in terms of implementation. What, what frequency of testing would you recommend for the populations that we're looking at? Weekly, bi-weekly, et cetera?
Sure. So, you know, I think there's a little bit of a balance between kind of, you know, what you mean, what the epidemiologists would say and kind of, you know, I've also sat in your chair too, and I real, you know, epidemiologists are really good at recommending that everyone get tested every day, but they never actually write checks for tests, right? And so, you know, what the data that is out there says is that you, I think, get the most bang for your buck going once a week. Bi-weekly doesn't really seem to change, to move the needle, although there would, there might be situations where the model that was used to make that determination isn't really fair to compare to that paper I was citing earlier. For example, NutriR, their students only go every other week, right? So, a student skips a week and then returns the following week, and that certainly wasn't built into the model that was in that paper. So, I think there's going to be some district-specific answers to that question. But in general, I think once a week is what is the most, you know, I'd say economical way to really move the needle in terms of the impact of surveillance. Now, the data does show that twice a week can be more effective. And we have a number of clients that are either doing twice a week, or, for example, right now in 102, where we started this, we had been doing once a week all year, and the week after Halloween, or the week after Thanksgiving, and next week as well, we're doing twice a week, just because we were anxious about the bump that everyone has, you know, been imagining. But we're actually, in point of fact, not really seeing it in our surveillance at 102 and elsewhere yet, like we saw after Halloween. But we're going once every two weeks, for two weeks, and then we're going back to once a week. I think for a K through eight environment, I think that's very reasonable. You could make an argument for maybe doing teachers or junior high kids more frequently, but I think one, once a week is probably the sweet spot.
And then I had one other. Do you recommend notifying negatives or just positives?
Right, yeah. We recommend notifying just positives, just because, number one, you know, well, how are you going to notify negatives? Because then it's going to be like an email. And then, if you use the same mechanism to notify positives, by the time you're notifying somebody that they're positive, they're going to be desensitized to the email anyway and probably not read that they're positive, right? And since you probably don't want to send an email saying you're positive, that pretty much locks you into actually directly reaching out to the party, usually through the nurse, and you wouldn't want the nurse to call everyone that was negative and say that they were negative, right?
Thank you.
I was just wondering about capacity to manage, right? We've gone from a testing program, I'm assuming where you've just done one or two districts to, it feels like lots of schools are hopping on the bandwagon. So if we approve the contract, is there, is there going to be kind of a capacity challenge for you down the road?
Well, I can promise you that there's going to be a capacity challenge, right? The question is how, how do we meet that challenge? I can say that for sure, right now, we're doing a pretty good job of stockpiling things that make January and February look pretty good, but more and more people are jumping out. I certainly can't promise that there won't be a capacity or bandwidth issue. All I can say is that we're working really hard to make sure that doesn't happen. And if it does happen, if we run out of tips or reagent in the end of March or the beginning of April, and we got people to the point where your average teacher gets vaccinated, you know, will we feel terrible about that? Well, better than that than running out in January. And right now, I'm not running out of anything in January, I'll promise you that.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board, Amy?
I'm just wondering if there are user errors or things that you'd advise families to keep in mind as they go home and implement this test?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Like, you know, as we move forward with districts and we, there's always like a communication part of this. It is really important that people know that there's no eating, drinking, or chewing gum for thirty minutes before they provide a sample. And so just to give not too long of an answer on that, but we had a participant in 102 who was a positive, who drank a protein shake right before they sampled. It was an adult participant, so we could follow up with them and engage them and say, well, what happened? Why did we miss you? And then this participant did it, a series of tests where they spat without eating or drinking anything. And then they waited a little while and they spat after drinking the same protein shake and then gum and then orange juice, like a morning drink. And all those things that they did it five minutes before providing a sample reduced the amount of RNA in the sample by PCR by about thirty to eighty fold, which meant that it went from, we detected it every single time in three runs of our normal RT lamp test when it was a good sample to one out of three times in when we had some of those protein drinks or something like that. So that's a key part of the communication. Any test, you know, there tends to be an over focus on the sensitivity of a test like this and comparing it to PCR. But every test that you're going to talk about in this regard all depends on the sample quality more than anything else. You know, PCR might be the most sensitive test out there, but for example, we had somebody in 102 who we referred to a diagnostic test. They went to go get a PCR nasal swab. Between the time they got the results back and they were swabbed, they had become symptomatic and lost their sense of taste and smell. And the PCR came back negative, like no one believes that. Does that mean PCR is a bad test? No, it means they didn't get a good sample. And the same is definitely possible for a saliva sample, and that's a big part of the communication.
Other questions from board members?
I've, I've got a couple for you, Dr. Campbell. One is that, you know, the key thing from our perspective is, once we get these results, what kinds of actions should we take based on them? You outlined some, but I wonder if you could help us understand how other districts, what actions they're taking? And if you have any suggestions of, of things that people might want to do, but are not warranted based on the results?
Right. So the most important thing is that these individuals are referred to a physician or diagnostic test, right? And in fact, we're meeting with IDPH tomorrow to kind of work on the details of, well, what do you want us to do and what do you not want us to do and how do you want us to do it? Because, for example, we can't report a result in our test to IDPH because it's a non-diagnostic test, right? And so that, the most important thing is that ultimately those individuals are, go get a diagnostic test. So the state can be made aware of them. Other than that, the, the kind of, the one that's more open to interpretation, for example, is contact tracing. You know, in 102, when we didn't realize how specific the test would be in the early days, we didn't initiate contact tracing until we had a positive diagnostic test. Now that we know that when we refer somebody to a diagnostic test, it's very, very likely to be positive, now we start contact tracing immediately because we kind of want to get ahead of that, if you will. And though, I mean, those are the two, the two things that you want to think about a little bit. The other thing that might be, you know, and we're kind of developing this as we develop more experience, is what's a, what's an acceptable quarantine period for somebody that is picked up, especially in the asymptomatic stage of infection, right? Most of the guidelines of how long you should stay out usually infer a diagnosis following the development of symptoms. And we're picking up people early enough where there's reason to believe you might want to reconsider just a, a flat seven or ten day window, whatever the guidance is today in terms of quarantine time, because we're picking up people earlier than they normally would be picked up.
And the other concern that a lot of people have brought up is, is you referenced it in your Swiss cheese model. When people get a negative result from this back, it doesn't mean that they are safe to go out and have parties with people and, you know, go to bars or whatever, a lot of our eighth graders are doing that, so we have to be careful.
Right, right, well.
For anybody who's, who's paying attention, that was not, not true.
No, no, well played and, but, but you're absolutely right. So the word for that is behavioral disinhibition, and there needs to be communication effort that prevents that. We had an, well, the week after Halloween, we ended up having a number of positives in 102. And ultimately, this was walked back to a very ill-advised sleepover party. And we felt great about the test because we were basically able to take attendance at the sleepover party. But at the same time, some people were like, how could you have a sleepover party? Right? And you want to make sure that no one feels like they're living in the NBA bubble and then might feel like it's okay to do something that is otherwise not advisable at all. And I think that is an important part of a communication strategy for implementing something like this. Obviously, there's a cost associated with it. There's value that can be derived from it, but you want to make sure that you don't create behavioral patterns that reduce the effectiveness of an approach like this, right?
Absolutely. And then I guess my final question is, you know, obviously, this test is helpful for a lot of folks and school districts that use it. On the other hand, you definitely have, or I assume you have a financial interest in, in the test being used. How are you disclosing your financial interests as you talk about these tests?
Right, well, so there's kind of two arms of the surveillance, you know, thing. First, it's what we've started in District 102. And I have no financial interest there because I am on the Board of Education, right? And so the company that we've created, which I'm like a thirty-three percent partner of, was really created because in 102, what we were able to do is we were able to fit two neighboring districts into that facility that wanted to participate in the surveillance. But by squeezing them in, there was simply no way to run more tests out of that facility. Like, it literally is like a, a science center type of day field trip place with parrots and turtles and everything else. It's not where you would set up a testing facility if you had your druthers. So what I did was I created a company to try to provide the same type of surveillance to other school districts. So I don't think that's a secret. I've told, I've spoken of that in our open sessions and our board meetings. This is again, different though, from like, you know, what we're doing in the school district, which I did voluntarily. But yeah, I guess you could say, on one hand, I'm incentivized to get more people to test. But at the end of the day, as we were kind of talking about earlier, I don't have any problem trying to find, trying to sell this, if you will. So, you know, we're going to end up being somewhere close to bandwidth, whether or not I convince a bunch of people to do it or not.
Understood, thank you. Oh, we have another question from Lisa.
Sorry, so in the districts that are using this, are some districts requiring families to have their children tested? And if you don't require it, is there a percentage goal that you say for maximum effectiveness? We need seventy-five percent of the children to participate, ninety percent, kind of, what's your thinking on that?
Right.
Are you saying any testing has value, so it doesn't matter?
Well, so I would say that to kind of change the last statement, you're, you're totally right, right? That your participation impacts your effectiveness, except that there's no magical number at which it goes from being highly effective to ineffective. It's more of a line, right? Where if you have a hundred percent effective, a hundred percent enrollment, it's a certain amount of effectiveness. And then as you have less and less enrollment, it becomes less effective. So some of the districts we're talking to are considering a mandatory type of participation. In 102, we were advised that this would have been legal. It's legal as long as you're offering people a remote option, should they decline the in-person attendance with participation in a surveillance program. But in the end, we made it mandatory, not because we couldn't do it legally, but just politically, it created a lot of headwinds for us and it was not a hill we wanted to die on.
I think you mean you made it voluntary, not mandatory.
Yes, exactly. What we meant to say is, well, we didn't mean to say mandatory because really, the vast majority of the pushback in our community didn't come to the surveillance approach itself, it came to making it mandatory. And so, you know, what we've seen in schools that I'd say resemble thirty-nine in a number of ways, were right around ninety percent participation, which I think is extraordinary and right around where NutriR is. We have some other schools in our district that are a little bit lower, and this tends to trend with some socioeconomic indicators of diversity. But even we see there's confidence in enrollment increasing in those schools as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the board? Oh, Frank Godwin.
Yeah, I had a follow-up on the frequency question. Do you see a value in the same frequency across different populations? In particular, you know, ten and under, you know, middle school age and adults? Whether the, the same frequency is beneficial for each of those different categories? Or whether there could be some variations?
Oh, sure. So, you know, I think you're very right about that, and that is kind of the same way that I would think about it. And, you know, I think basically what you're saying in, you know, is it wiser to think about junior high or teachers as a slightly different population than a group of second graders? Well, of course, the second graders you can have in a room and you can pod them up, if you will, and have them in a group of fourteen or fifteen kids and they never leave the room all day. Whereas you can't really do that with junior high kids, right? And teachers also tend to disproportionately be represented in the group that, of people that are identified as positive in a screener. So could you do them more frequently than perhaps the other kids? Like, we've talked about in that, that in our district, we've never quite gotten there. But, you know, if we couldn't have done everybody twice a week for the next two weeks, this week and next week, for example, I probably would have lobbied for getting the junior high and the teachers twice a week and leaving K through six once a week.
And I'll add on to that, Frank and Dr. Campbell. Dr. Campbell, it was nice enough to meet with me and with our experts from our metrics advisory team to talk through a lot of these scenarios and, and offer some advice. And what our experts have advised is, the first priority is for our adults within our schools. They are the most vulnerable and the most likely to be identified as positive one way or another. From there, it would go to our fifth through eighth grade campus. Although different from what Dr. Campbell just described, our students, even in, in those campuses are potted. So our students are across our entire district are within learning pods. So they really do only interact with twelve to eighteen people, other peers on a daily basis. And so one of the things that we're talking about at, at this point in our district is to launch in January, we, we hope with the board's approval, to pilot this on a small scale, really just to work out the logistics in December with a small group of individuals. And then to operate for the first couple of weeks in January, testing every individual who is willing to be tested once a week, and then to evaluate that frequency thereafter. And some of the ideas that our team have talked about is testing adults every week, testing students every other week, or looking at more of an episodic kind of testing of students, depending on, as Dr. Campbell described, after Halloween, after Thanksgiving, after winter break. Those seem to be really targeted times to increase the frequency of testing. What our team recommended is that we, we go with those first couple of weeks in January of testing each week and then use the data and, and evaluate how many cases we're identifying at that, that high level of time. And then come back to the board at that January twenty-fifth meeting with a recommendation for a testing schedule that then would bring us through the next several months, so that we kind of know what to expect. But most certainly, I think all of the experts are advising the adults, the teachers and staff within our schools will benefit the most from the more frequent testing. And students, because they're potted and because they're, they're smaller stature, could possibly be tested every other week. But we're going to start with testing everyone who's willing to participate once a week and then evaluate from there. Thank you. Dr. Campbell, I hope, I hope that reflects our conversation as well.
Right, no, the, the only qualification that I would give is that, you know, in the contract, we're not like demanding, you know, a certain number of tests. But the, like, initial commitment, there is an element where the estimate of the number of tests that you'll need to run is basically plotted out over eight weeks. And there's some details there that we'll just have to work on because, you know, for example, we don't really do, because of how many people want to do this over the course of a longer term, we're not really doing episodic surveillance where, like, if I just signed up everyone that wanted to do the first week in January, I couldn't get enough people to run those tests, right? So there are some little caveats there, but otherwise, and that, you know, the, the lawyers that work out the details of the contract can I think work out those details, but otherwise, what you said was accurate.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. And, and what the, what is proposed later on today's agenda is the draft contract with, which our lawyers are continuing to refine and make sure those numbers reflect what, what Dr. Campbell's organization can accept and what we can commit to for those first several weeks. What ultimately we'll need to do is run a registration process so that we can firm up those numbers so that Dr. Campbell and his team know exactly how many they can expect on a weekly basis moving forward. Kind of an overview of that. For our district, the surveillance program will cost the district eleven dollars per test, as long as we can estimate effectively. When we don't estimate effectively, that cost could go up to thirteen dollars a test. But I think we should be able to do a pretty good job there, plus some resources for logistical management and oversight of the program. The district at this point, the proposal is that the board would cover the costs of testing so that it is optional and so that we can increase participation as much as possible. But we have heard from many families who would like to contribute to the cost of the testing. And so the registration process would include an option to make a contribution to cover your own students' participation costs in the program. We do expect some families will opt to contribute, some will not, and either will be acceptable. The board should know that ultimately, we are saying the board will pay for the cost of the testing, but we will accept contributions on behalf of individual students if they wish to. Again, we hope to pilot with a small group to work out logistics in December, small group of students and a small group of staff, and then launch district-wide that week of January fourth. We hope that week to capture as many as we possibly can through testing, whether it's through the surveillance testing or through the Ambry PCR testing that we have launched last week. We hope that everybody returning from winter break and entering into in-person instruction will access testing one way or the other. We have provided the board with a draft calendar of testing for January and leading into February. Right now, we're estimating about seventy-five percent of our in-person population will participate. We'd love to see that even higher, and so we're going to open it up and encourage everyone to participate. If seventy-five percent of in-person families and staff participated, we would have about two thousand two hundred and fifty individuals testing a week. And so that ranges right around twenty-four thousand dollars to test each week, if in fact, we're doing everyone every week. So those would be the costs in the early stages, and then we may look to schedule out adults a little bit differently than students. So we'll work with Dr. So we'll work with Dr. Campbell on that.
Do we have any other questions, either board or administration, for Dr. Campbell before we let him go?
Thank you very much, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. Take care. All right, have a good morning, everyone. Bye.
So I would like to suggest, I know we are not done with your committee report, but I would like to suggest actually a five-minute recess.
Five minutes? Thank you.
It doesn't mean if we go forward with this that it's a license to resume business as usual, but it is, it is just another way that we are, another layer of protection for staff and students. So I'm eager to move forward with this.
Yeah, go ahead.
I agree with Lisa. Yeah, let's move forward as much as we can, as fast as we can. That would be great.
All right, yes, it's my.
Strategy Committee, so I'm calling on people this hour.
And normally, you're here, so.
I know, it's very confusing.
I agree. I support this, and I think it's well worth the money that we would be spending on that, or the parents who would even be helping out with that.
I do want to echo Lisa's caution, too. I think there are a lot of things that are imperfect about this test. I think, you know, in the testing subcommittee, when we've talked with experts, we've pointed out some things that are, you know, not... Look, there's no perfect test, and this has its imperfections as well. You know, there are some, you know, this is a non-FDA-approved test that's being provided by, you know, someone who is an expert in the field of virology, but also has a financial interest in what he's doing, which is fine. I have no problem with that. But I think we just have to remember all of the facts and weigh them appropriately. All of that said, I completely agree. I think it's worth using it and worth investing in it. Yeah.
I don't want to interrupt you if you're...
No, it's okay. I just want to point out that, I guess I would say very concretely, there may be other things that come along later that are better, that we prefer. And there may be reasons that as we go forward with this test, we look at what it's actually doing for us, and we say, you know what? This really isn't worth quite as much as we had expected. So I think it's a great thing to go and try and learn from. And I think we should be very thoughtful about what we do with the results we get. So for instance, it's not clear that, well, if you look at Nutria's positivity rates, for instance, and you think you can compare them to community positivity rates, you cannot, because you're testing many more people. So we just have to be very careful about how we think about the results that we're getting from this and what it means in terms of action we take. But that said, it's worth doing. Aaron.
I don't know if we could do this or not. I don't know if he has copyrighted the Swiss cheese thing. But if we could share that graphic with the community, I think in stress, you need every single piece of cheese to make the thing as most opaque as possible to spike. Because this doesn't mean, oh, well, I turn to my test so we can have a slumber party. But I think the community would need to have that made crystal clear to them.
So I've seen the Swiss cheese used at another school, distributed, so I'm pretty sure we can.
Okay.
Share that graphic.
We will certainly seek permission before doing so, but I agree with Lisa in that regard. It does seem like then the best approach is to take those first couple of weeks in January and really emphasize testing for all each week, and then to evaluate the frequency thereafter. And that's really our goal in navigating the contract, is to give ourselves the greatest access to testing for everyone who wants it, while also giving us the opportunity to continue to learn from what's emerging in the field. There are new tests emerging every day, and there's new learning emerging every day. And we want both to continue to contribute to our next steps.
Exactly. And I guess the one last thing I would say is, in my mind, the primary use for this test, which I think it is unambiguously good for, is if we identify people who have presumptive positives, we can get them out of the school more quickly. And that is really, we may be able to do other things with it, but that's the only one that I really am counting on.
And that that has value, significant value.
Yeah, that absolutely has value.
Well, I think, sorry, you didn't call me.
Yeah.
I'm out of order.
Go ahead.
So it wouldn't just get them out of the school. It would get them out of whatever's happening outside of the school where people are getting it. So, yeah, right.
Ellen.
This may, I hope this is the right place to bring this up, but the test, the testing that we just did, the PCR testing, it's just my hope that the numbers of teachers and families that signed up to do that testing, which I was shocked that there were so few families that signed up for that, that first bat, what we were calling like, what do? There was, we called it like a...
Bulk testing.
Bulk testing. I was really surprised that there were not more families that signed up for that. And I, just my personal, I'm a little concerned. I hope that is not a reflection of what we're expecting from our district. Like, I really hope that families are all, buy all into this, because it is so important. Like, I'm fully behind this, and I really believe in this, like, and the importance of this. So, but I was concerned at the PCR testing, that it was not only the, it was both numbers of faculty and families, lack of participation, I was really surprised. Is that, was there a reason?
So that, Ellen, is a perfect transition to an update on our bulk testing. I think actually, because it is PCR diagnostic testing, participation is very different in that kind of testing than we expect for a surveillance testing program. So typically, if you are accessing PCR bulk testing, it is because you are symptomatic or have been exposed to a COVID-positive individual. You have that known exposure. Sometimes you can access PCR testing if you have a concern around exposure. And so this bulk testing event was really designed to allow access to all three of those groups, symptomatic or known exposure or a concern regarding possible exposure. We did have 230 individuals sign up to register to participate in the testing program. We actually were very pleased with that. There was a short turnaround time to register, and it really, again, is designed not as a surveillance program, but as a diagnostic assessment. And so of those 230 registered, we did identify seven individuals who tested positive for COVID-19. There was one other individual over the weekend who also was identified as positive for COVID-19 separate from this testing event. And so over this past weekend, there were eight individuals across our district, one at each school, in fact, and two of our schools had two COVID-positive identified individuals. So I think the testing event, we are gathering some feedback from those who participated, but it did seem like it went over very, very well. It was a smooth operation. People who participated found it easy enough to register, to participate. We, I think, had relatively good experience there. And so we hope to offer both in January. And so you'll see later on today's agenda, as we talk about the schedule for January, PCR testing in particular is, as Dr. Campbell referenced, the gold standard of testing. It is the diagnostic assessment that should be used if someone has symptoms, has been exposed. Also, if someone travels, what we're understanding from IDPH is that a PCR test may help, depending on how they come out with their new guidelines, may help to shorten that quarantine. And so, again, in January, that week of January 4th, we really want to make sure that anyone who falls into that more diagnostic category has access to Ambry PCR testing, and that everyone else who may not fall into that first category accesses the surveillance testing. Ultimately, we would love to get to that 90% participation rate. Even if we get to 75% participation rate, we think that will really serve as a significant mitigation layer for us. Again, as community spread rates are higher and as we're transitioning back from what otherwise might be an exposure incident for some over that longer break, where systems are not as structured. When we're at home, we know that there's sometimes more exposure than at school.
Great, did you say seven out of 230, is that right?
That's correct, seven out of 230. And I'll qualify that with, out of the 230 who registered, there were a handful who then did not show up for one reason or another to submit their sample. So just a handful who didn't end up participating. There are also about eight who were still resulting today. So we're still watching for those results to come in today, for one reason or another. Most results, so we collected samples on Thursday, most results were available to everyone by Saturday. A handful were still coming in on Sunday, and a very small percentage, again, I think it's, the number is eight, had not received the results by this morning. So those are some things that, as we continue to build out our plan for January, we really need to make sure that no one is held out of school because we're waiting test results if they test with us.
Actually, I apologize, that reminds me of one Dr. Campbell contract thing, which is, I have heard some anecdotal reports of slow results at Nutria. And I think to the degree that we can put into the contract, I mean, if you get a result from that test a week later, it really has, you know, diminishing value very quickly. And so to the degree we can reflect that in the contract, I think that would be very helpful.
Yes, absolutely. And there's some learnings we have from watching Nutria implement the program. Some of it is labeling and logistics. But you are right, and again, for that reason, that week of January 4th, if we are invested in testing for that week, we want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to participate as they come back from winter break and after New Year's, which is, again, another exposure event that we're aware of, and that those results are available before in-person instruction restarts.
Both Lisa and Ellen have questions.
So I just wanted to add on to Dr. Kermit Scully's report. So of the seven that tested positive, I believe you said that the majority of those seven, it wasn't a surprise.
Surprising, yes, that is accurate. The seven who were notified, the nurses did an outstanding job processing all of these all weekend long. I have to give them acknowledgement that they went above and beyond all we're processing Saturday and Sunday. But of those who were notified of positive results, my understanding is all seven were able to point to an exposure event that they were aware of, and so that the results were not incredibly surprising to those families who were notified. And yet, it is, they had not tested positive yet, so that the results were really helpful, and those cases now are isolated, and families are accessing support beyond, so.
And the other, kind of, one other point is, I just want to say, is a family that uses this in other schools, it is not an unduly burdensome testing protocol. Your child wakes up in the morning, no food, no drink until you do this. It's just part of your morning routine, and away you go. So I, there is, I think it is very user-friendly.
Ellen.
First, thank you for your clarification about the testing, the PCR testing, the Ambry testing. That actually is very helpful in laying my, kind of, what I was thinking about the other day about that. Makes complete sense. That's probably the reason why the guy looked at me and was like, you're paying for this? When I said that we have no symptoms and no exposure as we were driving to the line. I was like, no, you just want to have to test them.
And for some, that's a huge benefit as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the right reasons. So, and leading off of that, I just, in terms of the testing programs in all, I also want, I think we need to be very clear to not just our in-school families, but also our families who are, who have students staying at home. Because I know there are students who play in the neighborhood, who are studying at home, and they have their own, even though they have their own pods and things like that, groups of friends, parents are still working and parents are still doing things, and the rates are still high, and that's still part of our community. Everyone is still part of our community. So I just want to be, I want us to be mindful of still communicating to our entire District 39 community for the remote learners as well as our in-school learners, that this is super beneficial and necessary for our whole community. It's not, because I recall reading some letters about, what's the point if we're not going to be in, present in the school building? There's a big point, because we're trying to flatten the curve in our whole community, and we all, we all have to buy groceries, and we all go out, and we're all in and around and doing things, and we're not all, I assume even people who have their children at home, completely self-isolating every day. We're not under, you know, house arrest. So as long as that's the case, I just, I just want to, you know, encourage that this is something that we are clear to all of the families, that it's not just for the kids that are coming into school, but that it's something, you know, am I wrong on that?
No, I think that's, that is correct. I will just add a caveat. At this point, we are planning for Ambry PCR testing to be available, and we did offer that testing to our remote learners as well, and that access will continue to be available. As we launch the safeguard surveillance program, the idea is to start with our in-person learners, make sure that those logistics are worked out before we would expand to our remote learners. Just because, again, this is a surveillance for coming into school. And so, but the PCR testing absolutely is available, and we did have many remote learners participate in the testing as well.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, so, you know, it's, we're adding two layers of Swiss cheese, right? We've got the Ambry, and it sounds like we are in favor of the, of the Dr. Campbell test. Any other questions about what, about these two layers of Swiss cheese, about testing? Yeah, Lisa?
Just one more statement. I know this was a heavy lift, both by the Subcommittee of the Metrics Advisory Committee and for the D39 Administration, so I want to recognize that and say thank you. And I appreciate the ongoing commitment to layering on additional layers of safety or cheese, however you want to look at this now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, I think then with that, let's move on to our next topic, which is our in-person learning surveys and ongoing improvement efforts. And Carrie, go ahead.
Thank you. As a follow-up to the in-person learning program review that was conducted, a committee met to develop recommendations and action plans on December 1st. And we have Katie Lee and Kelly Jackson joining us remotely to provide us with a summary of the committee's findings and the next steps that they recommend to continue to make improvements to our in-person learning. So I'll turn it over to Katie and Kelly, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, and also Kristin Swanson. We have, overall, the data points to that people are very satisfied with the in-person learning program.
Katie, can you speak up, please?
Yes. I'll just be as close as possible. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. And so, you know, a couple of highlights. You know, parents noted in particular that they were given a sense of normalcy and structure, you know, not just for their students, but also for their families. And the students across all grade levels, the most popular positive aspect was about the ability to see other students, their friends, their teachers, make those connections in person, and just being together. So the socialization aspect of learning outweighed the inconvenience of any health and safety protocols that have been implemented so well within all of our schools. The teachers echoed all of that, all of those sentiments, as well as the paraprofessionals. In addition to that, they felt that the special procedures were going very well. And they also highlighted some, that everyone seemed to be developing these routines and making it a habit. But given all of these positive aspects, we knew that there's more that we could do. And so what the committee did on December 1st was get together, and we formulated four recommendations. And so I'll go through each one, and for the sake of time, I'll do a high-level highlight of some of the action items that came out. So the first recommendation was to improve adherence to health and safety protocols, such as social distancing and mask wearing. In addition, provide ongoing guidance on quarantine guidelines for students, families, and staff. A couple of things to note. Both groups of staff members who were part of the committee really emphasized the need for continuing education, so the ongoing lessons and reteaching to reinforce. The others were talking about how do we provide in unstructured times some activities that are structured, in a ironic way, that does also adhere to those safety guidelines? So we're finding that we could look for activities that have a no-contact sentiment. So we were finding some resources there. And then for more outdoor opportunities, creating a schedule that would be... that would be followed or sign up so that there's, the social distancing is happening with some areas designated for such. Recommendation number two was addressing the social emotional needs of students. And one of note that sparked other ideas was about Zoom Classroom Buddies. So yes, our students are in person and they stay within their pods. But they also know that they have friends and students in other classrooms, but they just can't be near them. So they were thinking during, you know, recess or any unstructured time, or lunch, they could, while they're, you know, in their space, Zoom with another buddy and they would have these classrooms. Not only would that be for socialization, but also for some peer-to-peer learning. They, we have a group of teachers already who have tried peer editing with one another and having buddies from other classrooms. And that seemed to work out well, so that was very well received. In addition to that would be any clubs that are interest-based, that are maybe sponsored by some parent volunteers or some other staff members that we have available. And they would be able to participate in those. The third recommendation was address the needs of 5'8" students who require additional support academically during remote learning day within the hybrid model. Now, this is not to say that we do not support our elementary students, but in the particular set of data that we were looking at, it was a point of highlight. And so the team really came up with the idea of, how do we reimagine what win could look like, those remote check-ins? You know, who are we serving? Are we effective in who we're serving? What are the activities that would best serve those students to support them in their instruction or their learning? One other thing I will say is the in-period connections. The staff has been working very hard in establishing those in-period connections with remote students as well as, you know, the in-person students. And they would like to continue to do that. So the fourth recommendation is one that was the most discrepant of all of the data of positivity. It would be the, the staff's sense of personal well-being. So recommendation four was increase the positive impact of in-person hybrid learning on staff's personal well-being. So one that they have communicated pretty clearly is as much as possible, they know that there are restrictions, but as much as possible, any advanced, longer-term notice would assist them in the way they approach their lesson planning and the work with their students. So they, we are going to, as much as possible, be able to provide that. The paraprofessionals who work so diligently in our classrooms would like to be a part of the conversation. Not that they haven't been, but could we have regular meetings? Part of the conversations of how to improve, how to supervise, how to work with students within the in-person setting. We've always expressed our staff appreciation. However, we want to make sure that we're partnering with our PTOs and PTAs in providing some appreciation in a more regular basis. And then also to just support our teachers and staff on what the social emotional competencies are so that they could also apply it to themselves. We have two kind of roads or paths. It would be, one is adult SEL as well as for our students. So we thought this would be something that we need to focus on as well. We're happy to answer any questions that we have or that you have for us.
Warren? Yeah, go ahead.
This is a quick comment. When I was in my kitchen reviewing the papers and I proclaimed that other thing brilliant, when I saw Zoom Buddies, I also said brilliant. So thank you, the rest of it. And thanks for doing this deep dive. It, you know, it would have been easy to just launch this back in August and let it run. But as is often the case in our district, we are constantly trying to figure out ways to improve. So thank you so much.
I will say, we were very impressed with the Committee of Representatives that formed. They read, they came ready to offer every idea that they could come up with. And some sharing what they've already kind of tried and dabbled with themselves, so.
Other questions, thoughts, comments?
I'd do, I'd say this. I mean, it's really impressive. Thanks for doing this. This is a really fantastic idea. I saw one thing that I was, that I'd like to understand better, which is the negative impact on the teachers and the parapros for in-person hybrid and how high that rate is. So I'd like to understand, I'd like to understand what it is. You know, did, were there anecdotes? Like what is it about that experience that has created the negative impact?
I think it's a combination of things. One would be their sense of being heard, I think is one. You know, they, they've been working extremely hard on both models or all three models in particular. And I think at times, they feel that they may not have been heard in, you know, when they express their opinions or their state of mind at the time. That's one. The other could be, you know, some, their own sense of safety, their own sense of safety. It's not that they don't feel safe within our school buildings per se. But I do think there's two elements to it. Knowing that your environment is safe, knowing that we are doing everything we can. But also having that very high bar of, are we doing the very best that we can and can we sustain this? So I think it's a combination of things. I don't know if anyone else.
I would add to that if I could. I've heard from a lot of teachers. And I think there are two things that are affecting the well-being of all of us. And it's, it's hard to point toward in-person instruction being the cause of this necessarily. But the reality is, we are living in a pandemic that is impacting each of us personally and professionally in dramatic ways. All of our personal lives have changed and shifted in ways that sometimes we don't even realize the impact of those changes. And they, it's draining on all of us. And, and often, I think we don't have those bucket filler moments that used to give us the opportunity to rejuvenate and feel, feel better to, to come back and keep doing this hard work again and again and again in our personal lives. We don't have those social outlets. We don't have those joyful moments in the same ways that we might have otherwise. And so I think the pandemic as a whole is just really taking, having a tremendous effect on all of us. And sometimes, we forget that our teachers are human beings first. And teaching is one element of who they are. And I think that's true of all of us. But we hear it for teachers time and time again. People don't expect to see teachers in the grocery store. Kids see teachers in the grocery store and they're like, oh, I thought you just lived in the classroom. The reality is, these are, these are human beings who are working so incredibly hard to do the very best work possible in person with these, these little beings who come to us every day, looking to us as their, as their heroes and as their inspiration and as those people who don't and shouldn't be impacted. And yet, they are. And so I think for our teachers, whether in-person or remote, this is just incredibly hard work. And we forget that outside of this in-person work or remote work that we are working incredibly hard to do, there's this whole other layer of who we are as human beings that is also being impacted by the pandemic. And I think sometimes that's forgotten or at the very least overlooked. And I don't think that that is fair. The other thing that I've heard, and I will tell you quite frankly, I've felt, is that sentiment that it's, it is never enough. We are all working so hard to provide the very best learning environment for our, our students and to support one another through this incredibly challenging time. And too often, what we are hearing back is, it is not enough. It is not enough in-person time. It is not enough synchronous time. It's not enough feedback for the kids. How come you can't do more? How come you can't do it better or differently? And that's hard. It is hard to hear that time and time again when you feel like you are giving your heart and soul to these people who are relying on you, absolutely. But you also have all the other people in your personal life who are relying on you as well. And so that sentiment of, of constantly hearing not enough, do better, do more, it takes its toll. And it takes its toll when you are trying to then, as a teacher, you're kind of on stage with those little people. You can't let your guard down in person or remotely when you're teaching students. And so it, it just, it starts to take its toll. And the ability for us to continuously try to refill our own buckets or have those buckets filled is, is waning in this environment of not enough and constant impact and uncertainty that, that we're navigating.
Carrie, that was insightful, extremely well-expressed, and extraordinarily important. Thank you for what you just said.
And I will add that we heard you, that I think we were all listening. And we understand. And we will do our job to be more supportive.
Erin.
So I know the original question was about District 39 teachers. And I'm not a District 39 teacher. And I'm not even a teacher yet. I'm a parapro who's in grad school to become a teacher. But I work in District 36, just to the north of us in Oneeka. And everything you just said is exactly what's going on there. And we had an email from the WEA yesterday where they used the word scramble. That is exactly the right word that describes what being in person can look like day to day. I'll give you one example. Is a few weeks ago, the lead teacher in the classroom I work in, I'm with third graders, she came in, she ended up getting a headache. She had to leave. That triggered a process where all the administrators came into my space and started getting the kids to pack up all their gear so we could get out in 30 seconds. So someone says, put everything you need to teach for the whole rest of the day in this basket. I had 30 seconds to look around the room. I'm taking this, I'm taking this, I'm taking this. And we were out the door. And then I'm teaching them the whole rest of the day. And I'm happy to do it. And I'm happy to do it for frankly, not very much compensation because that's not what I'm in this for. But it is absolutely way more difficult than a normal school year. And so I think people probably don't understand that because they haven't lived it. But I have lived it. And it's absolutely, it is a scramble, but the kids are worth it, so.
Other comments or thoughts? So Katie, I have a couple, which is, again, great report. And I think, you know, one of the indications of that is that what I just heard in this meeting is a moment of, of clarity at a high level. A moment of understanding of what we're really all going through. And I think, you know, all, all three of you expressed it well. So John, thank you for the question that, that led to that. My question on this is, is there any? So let's get to the fourth recommendation in a second. But for the first three first, let me ask, is there anything the board should be doing to help the action plans come to fruition?
I believe you're supporting us to the fullest of your capacity, just the continued support for the community and the message to families that we're working together in making our community safe. I think that is one thing. But I do believe that the sentiments that were shared just now and how you've backed them up is going to go a long way.
So I think, you know, what we were talking about largely just now is this fourth recommendation and how we're, how we're supportive. One of the things that I hear clearly from the, the survey is we want to know what's going on further out. We want decisions about what's happening, not just 10 days from now in that week, but further out. Now, we designed our model at the beginning to be flexible and to be able to turn on a dime. But we've also learned a lot of things since we designed our model. And it sounds to me like one of the things we're learning from this survey and from a lot of other evidence, to be frank, is that, you know, while it is good to be able to turn on a dime and while we know that there may be cases where we have to go to remote very rapidly, and Erin's example is a concrete and very clear one, it is in many ways preferable to create a system in which we are thinking further out and making decisions further out. Do you think I'm hearing that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So that's a really important learning for me as a board member and I hope for all of us as a board. Any other thoughts or reactions to, to this report? And we're gonna, we're, it's a nice lead-in to the next topic, which is talking about what we're doing on the calendar for the couple of weeks. Yeah, John?
I thought, I mean, the, I would, I would suggest that we do more polling around what is this, what's around this negative impact and what we could do. I think, I mean, obviously, it helps that you guys laid out your, your impressions of what's going on. But I think more study of that would make some sense going forward.
Yeah, Frank.
I just had one more quick one. I, I think you've heard that the board is very supportive of this administration and the staff, the permutations and the work that it requires to get to where we're at right now. I think it's also important and reinforces that, that surveys are good, but when you come down to actually making decisions that impact your life is where you really get the information. And the fact that we have a very high percentage that have chosen in-person, and that percentage actually went up. So there's a, there's a lot of, I'd like it to be better. And in this environment, there's a lot of things I'd like to be better. But when it actually came down to making a choice, the choice of the community was, this is beneficial. And it's beneficial enough that I want to stay with it. And it's beneficial enough that more people wanted to jump on the bandwagon than jump off. So I think that's a nice representation of the work that you've done to get to this point. And so I just wanted to reinforce that.
Okay.
Can I say something?
Oh, sorry, Ellen.
I also want to say something really quick is to remind, to remind you that usually, you know, and I know it doesn't, doesn't necessarily make it easier, because we all, we all hear it and we all suffer having to hear it, the criticisms. But the criticisms, the loudest ones and the ones you hear all the time, I think are coming from the fewest. They're, they're not coming from the largest number of people. What we're seeing, what you saw in the, in the, actually even the enrollment numbers for the next semester is that people are happy. And I know it doesn't make it all go away, the complaints and the, you know, it's not good enough, it needs to be more, it needs to be more, kind of that, that kind of complaint and language. But I'm guessing that that's coming from a small number and not the larger number of families who are truly satisfied and happy with what they're getting and have a, actually a true perspective because they're also living it in their lives every day and seeing the effects of it. So, I mean, I'm hopeful that most of the parents and families in our community, I would hope, are more understanding than you think they are towards the teachers and towards the administration and the amount of work and how truly, truly difficult this mountain has been to climb for all of you. And just knowing that, I just hope gives you some sense of, not just accomplishment, but keeps, you know, holds you up when it seems the hardest. So I just thought I'd add that.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're, so thank you for the report again. I think we're ready to move on to the next topic.
Very good. So next on the agenda is a discussion of in-person instruction plan for the weeks of December 14th and January 4th. The board at our last meeting made a decision to approve in-person instruction for this week, the week of December 7th, for our youngest and neediest of learners. That includes our comprehensive needs students and our students in early childhood through second grade. And the board preferred to wait on a decision regarding December 14th. And the board preferred to wait on a decision regarding December 14th and January 4th. So we are here to give an update to the board regarding the metrics team discussion on December 4th that will help to guide this decision for the board. And also a close review, just as we did last week, of our staffing opportunities and needs for the week of December 14th, which do look a little bit different than they did for the week of December 7th. We had anticipated that. So I will briefly review what we talked about in terms of the external COVID metrics, and Heather will give an update in terms of our internal metrics related to staffing. So let me see if I can share my screen here. I will point everyone to the metrics dashboard. Let's see if I can accomplish this effectively. There we go. So this is our dashboard where each week we update our metrics. This is the overall dashboard, which just gives a really high-level review of where we are at. Again, red indicating substantial risk or concern related to the metric, moderate or minimal, which would mean we feel as though we are in a pretty good place, low level of risk in that metric. Next come the metrics reports. And then, as has been developed now, several months ago, we've been tracking these data and try to keep these updated as often as we can. We're committed to updating them twice a week, though when there's important decisions happening or metrics that seem to be changing day to day, we have tried to update them more regularly. So this chart and the next one was updated last night with additional information. What we see here is that the external COVID-19 metrics remain high, though have stabilized despite the holiday break. There was a lot of concern that we would see another significant spike, especially over this past weekend. Our experts have told us 10 to 12 days out from any exposure event are the most likely times where we really start to see those spikes. We'll see new cases happening five to seven days out. And then the impact on hospitalization really starts to come into play 10 to 12 days out. So we were monitoring these data really closely over the weekend, knowing that we were hitting that 10 to 12-day period post Thanksgiving. These are the positivity rates. Again, red is for the WILMAT zip code. Blue is for the New Trier Township zip codes. And then yellow represents our District 39 staff regional zip codes where they reside. 93% of our staff are represented by those zip codes. The regions up above, where it is black and gray, are the regions defined by the governor's office. So again, we've seen, we saw this significant spike, and then we saw a stabilization. We do believe that the mitigation efforts put into place throughout our communities by the governor's office have helped to stabilize that. We also believe that everyone's safe behavior over Thanksgiving and really limiting those gatherings helped to limit the spread and exposure that might have otherwise occurred. So many thanks to everyone for making really smart choices over the Thanksgiving break. These are our new cases per 100,000 population. Again, the red, blue, and yellow helps us track the various regions that we're monitoring. At the bottom, you'll see the cases identified within our district among students and staff. And again, we have seen some cases occur even throughout Thanksgiving break. We were monitoring and reporting those cases, doing contact tracing, et cetera. As I mentioned earlier, we did identify eight cases over the weekend among our students and staff. Those were reported to IDPH over the weekend and notified to our families at large as well. And then finally, these are the COVID-19 cases in District 39. Those eight cases identified and reported over the weekend are included here. What you will see is right now, there are no classrooms on quarantine, and that's because we've had this break of in-person. Any class that was quarantined prior to Thanksgiving break has now been released and recovered back to, back to site. We haven't seen yet any cases that lingered beyond the quarantine period, which also is, is really a very beneficial sign that those who have contracted the virus have been able to recover within that 14-day quarantine, as far as we're aware. And we're really pleased by that as well. So we do continue to monitor. We have two staff cases that we're monitoring, 12 student cases that we're monitoring at this point. And then finally, our staffing metrics. So again, overall, we continue to closely monitor our external metrics. Regarding our internal metrics and staffing, Heather will provide a summary to the board in looking at staffing plans and needs for in-person instruction during the week of December 14th. I think I'll pause there and let Heather, well, let me just give a brief introduction if I could.
Carrie, just before you do, for anybody who's watching, if any of the dashboard stuff went by a little too quickly, wilmeth39.org. And on the left-hand side, there's a link to the dashboard. So if, for instance, the staffing one went by a little bit quickly, but if you want to go and see that, that's where you find it. Sorry.
Thank you. And those reports too, provide the detailed reports each week that the metrics team reviews. So anyone who's looking for more information, again, the dashboard is meant to be kind of a high-level look. Even those charts that are posted and updated regularly, those are really high-level reviews. You can review that about 25-page report each week, and that gives you some more in-depth data to to really look at, including the trends. So where we have been and where we seem to be trending with those data. John?
Yeah, I had a, I would like a refresher on the working quarantine number, the 52 working quarantine. What is that and why is that?
So.
Should we go to the staffing report and then come back to that question? Or is that best handled now?
I can briefly describe it, but I know Heather will give more detail when she gets to her portion of it. So some staff are on quarantine due to exposure, but not necessarily symptoms, or possibly due to a household member who has been exposed. As we all have learned now, if you have a household member who has been exposed or has symptoms, even if they are not COVID-positive, the entire house needs to quarantine until those results are available. And so what happens is we sometimes have staff who are on quarantine due to one reason or another, but are able to work. There are other times where a staff member might be on quarantine and they themselves are ill, and thus they are not able to work. And so there are two sets of data that we monitor there. Obviously, if someone is on quarantine and able to work, that is tremendously beneficial to us because we can continue to provide instructional services. It does present a logistical challenge, though. If our students are in person, but staff are on quarantine and working, those students in person still need to be supervised by someone. And so just the fact that they're working is hugely helpful, but doesn't always solve the entirety of the problem if we're in person.
The only thing I'll add to that is that those that are not working, sometimes their job responsibilities don't permit them to work remotely. So that would be the only other element that I would add.
So a custodian is a really good example of that, but there are others probably that many could think of. And then there are others who just, there aren't substitutes available. So say our principals, if a principal is on quarantine, often they're working while on quarantine. There isn't an onsite substitute available. Some of our specialty-related services groups, like psychologists, speech-language pathologists, if they aren't able to work remotely, there are very few of any subs available. So, so those are, the logistics of managing our really complex systems are challenging and often not fully observed by a parent who is simply sending their child to school. So as, as Heather's microphone gets fixed, I do want to kind of summarize at this point. Looking at December 14th, we have 15 known staff members who will need daily sub-coverage. We have more than that who are on quarantine, but there's 15 that are known who need daily sub-coverage. The district does employ 600 staff on a daily basis. We've looked back and see that the substitutes per week have increased from October to November. And now leading into December, again, we anticipate that to grow as increased exposure throughout our community occurs. I will turn it over to Heather to kind of give an overview, and then I'll circle back with some thoughts that I have before we open it up to the board. Heather?
Great, thank you very much. Most of what I was going to share has been shared, which is fine. It's a recap from our meeting on Friday with the metrics team as well. But the element that I think I really want to highlight today is this historical data. So when we went back and looked at the number of staff on quarantine that we report out each week over the course of October and November, kind of took out August and September because things were, we weren't fully staffed because not everybody was in session every day. And so it made sense really just to concentrate on October and November. And we've definitely seen an increase. So the average number of staff needing on quarantine, needing a substitute in October was 20, and we moved to 31 in November per week. And that is just a count. That doesn't say how many days they needed the sub. It's just one staff member needing at least one sub during that one-week period. And that's due to a variety of reasons, and I can't emphasize this enough. It really is significant to us how many staff members are needing to quarantine, either due to exposure, like Carrie had shared. All those reasons are applicable. And it's having a significant impact on our ability to staff our schools. And I know you've heard me say this before, you heard it last week as well as Friday at the metrics review. But that really is the greatest concern right now in terms of our ability to have school in person every single day for our, our students. And so we can predict and anticipate some of the absences coming our way, and our secretaries are working incredibly hard to access any of our substitutes that are willing and able to work with us over the next two weeks. Some more have stepped up. We interviewed more, and we have forum process again, just from the end of last week to today. So we're working as quickly as we can to move and get staff available. But the need is quickly outpacing our resources. And that is the most worrisome piece to us right now. And dare I say, the principals, because they're the ones trying to piece it together.
Carrie, you head.
Yeah, so I would add to that. I know we've received some questions regarding the anticipation of these challenges and people kind of wondering why we don't have substitutes already available. And I will just say emphatically, we absolutely anticipated this, and we have expanded our subpool dramatically. We have hired onsite substitutes from the beginning of the year in anticipation of staffing challenges. We have strengthened and added more and more numbers to our subpool every week to continue to strengthen the availability of subs. As one principal shared, she called 30 subs who are on our list and on, on hire for us, and only two were available to sub within her school. And so that, it, this is not a lack of anticipation of the challenge. I would say emphatically that these challenges were not a surprise, nor were we caught off guard. In fact, we have closely monitored staffing since September, knowing that if community spread rises, then our need for additional staff to be on quarantine due to illness, due to exposure, due to exposure of a household member would also rise. We've increased our onsite subs to assist in addressing these anticipated challenges. And we, as I mentioned, expanded our daily substitute pool in significant ways. The challenge really is that as community spread increases, so too does the exposure and possible exposure to our staff. Staff must stay home and isolate if they've been exposed or if a household member has been exposed, or if they're just experiencing symptoms. That is what we require of our staff in order to keep, keep our school environments as healthy and safe as they have been. The challenge really at this point is the the confluence of rising quarantines for everyone throughout our community, including our staff, coupled with the reductions of subs that are available and willing to work in the months of December. Add to that the fact that many other districts have moved to remote environment. And so some of our staff find themselves in need of staying home with their children in order to supervise what otherwise, their own children who may have been in school otherwise. There are very few districts who right now are continuing with in-person instruction. So again, it, it, it is something that we've anticipated. We understood our charge to be in the metrics team, to continue to monitor so that we could predict when it was at its breaking point, which is what we talked about last week. And so right now, we know for the week of the 14th, we do believe that we can staff it, staff our in-person program. But we expect that there will be some classrooms or pods that would need to move to remote. That inconsistency and predictability is what we worry the most about. Can so.
Carrie, can I just add?
Please.
We can staff the known absences of the 15 staff members. It's the unknowns and the continuance of being exposed and having symptoms that we don't know. And I, I can't promise you today that we can staff that.
Absolutely. And, and yet, I think, Heather, you said that we have already called upon 10 to 15 subs in addition to our onsite subs and in addition to those who have already been planned for to cover those who are on quarantine.
Yes, we've called everybody that is available to sub and have secured them for next week if they're available. There still may be classes that we cannot staff, however.
Might get clarification on that. So you're saying we do have additional subs?
We do.
For the unknown?
Yes.
Okay. And, and about?
So it, it ranges at each school on each day. But let's say there's one school for one day, they have no extra subs. Others have one to two, two and a half subs extra per day, per school.
So I just want to bring it home. I, I, I think the board is all very aware. But to the community and those who aren't listening regularly to the metrics committee, what Dr. Karina Scoly has outlined is a systematic, weekly attempt to use creative ways to identify subs. And for those who are just tuning in, that includes finding and hiring parents in our community who are willing to sub. And there is just a very real limitation on the number of people who are qualified, willing and able to sub on a given day, in a, in a given week for a variety of reasons. So I, I want to backstop our superintendent and say, they have been at this for a very long time. And I also want to repeat a story that I heard Principal Lippman talk about at the metrics committee meeting on Friday, which is, the best-laid plans can be derailed at 7:00 or 7:08, 7:30 a.m. when somebody calls and doesn't know they're sick, and there's a last-minute scramble. And so what you don't see is all the work behind the scenes every day by principal administrators. So I, I really want to say to those who, who have concerns, why is this, it's a surprise. It's not a surprise. And it's not a new thing that we are trying to find subs. There's just a very real limitation on the number of people who can work on a given day.
Other questions, comments, thoughts? And, and maybe just to be, to keep us focused, you know, what we heard earlier is that we want some decisions and, and guidance from the board for, for periods that are a little further out. So with that in mind, let me request, unless there are objections that we talked about January 4th first, and see if we have a consensus of the board on the recommendation that the administration has made that we are remote for that week of the 4th to allow people to get, you know, be in town and get some of the testing done so that we're clean to go on the 11th. Lisa?
Mark, I'm going to start the conversation on this. I, I think it's, we've just heard, and I believe, if I'm a betting woman, that we will go ahead and approve the contract for testing. And kind of key to that is using the week of the 4th to bring everybody back, go remote, fully remote, and really implement the testing protocol that we are about to approve. So I just want to throw that out there, that I am fully supportive of January 4th, fully remote, with the focus on both bringing people back, normal instruction, remote, with testing.
Thank you. Other thoughts on the 4th? Yeah?
So I would agree wholeheartedly. I think what we need to think about is making sure we, metrics, assuming that metrics allow, making sure that we can then return on the 11th so that travel from any of us does not prohibit or require a quarantine that goes beyond that. That would be my concern, which, you know, we just would want to get ahead of.
I will say in response to that, we were in communication with the Cook County Department of Public Health late last week on Friday. And many of us as superintendents were asking about whether or not IDPH or the Cook County Department of Public Health would adopt what the CDC has now revised as their quarantine guidelines. What we hear from IDPH and the Cook County is that they expect to revise their protocol by the end of this week so that we have some additional knowledge. However, they expect that they will be slightly more restrictive than what the CDC has put out, not quite So their quarantine likely will be shortened, but maybe not quite as much as the CDC has shortened it. So the CDC is now saying 10 days quarantine, seven days if you have testing to prove if you have a negative test. It sounds like the IDPH or the Cook County Department of Public Health might say a 10-day quarantine. They've also given the opportunity for some testing to shorten it. So we're waiting for what that will look like, and we have to adhere to what the IDPH and the Cook County Department of Public Health has advised us in that regard. And so we hope to have that information and to communicate it broadly by the end of this week or early next so that people going into this two-week of holiday break can plan accordingly, because we need people to be back on the 4th to accomplish whatever quarantines must be accomplished so that we can resume in-person instruction. Thank you.
Other thoughts on the 14th or, excuse me, on the 4th of January, or the 11th for that matter? Go ahead.
I support the recommendation for the pause. We did a pause after Thanksgiving, and that resulted in us being able to accelerate opening up after. And assuming that same logic applies over the holiday, then the same logic should apply. If there's any logistics value of having some subset of people come back on Thursday and Friday, if you recommend that, I'd be interested in hearing it. But I completely understand using the model that worked successfully over Thanksgiving or over the winter holiday makes sense.
Yep.
So at the Metrics Committee, I think it was like two weeks ago, we had heard both unions talk about doing a survey of their membership, and a very high number of members were planning on traveling. And I do think that we need to make sure and maybe be explicit about expectations that if you travel, you need to be back home so that on the 11th, you are ready to resume in-person instruction. I don't really know how we go about doing that, but I was taken very off-guard when I heard those very high numbers. And I would hate to see one week of remote on the 4th turn into two or three weeks based on the choices that our community is making during the holidays.
Thank you. Again, I know that many of us were surprised by that. The reality of travel was somewhat different from what was reported in that Metrics Team. Heather, I don't know if you can address that directly, because I know that there was some frustration out there, and I don't think that the reality of travel was actually lined up with how that information was presented. And Heather, I'll let you address that.
So we have just a little over 30 staff members who traveled over Thanksgiving. I don't have the numbers yet for where we'll be after winter break. And based on the notes and the information that I received from the principals, a lot of it focused on needs for families. It wasn't, they weren't, those numbers aren't reflective of just pleasure travel, if you will. There was a reason and a need behind travel. But as we know, that doesn't quantify or change the need for quarantine. If you travel, there is a need to quarantine. And so just to give that perspective, and I think we heard some union members share even at the Metrics Team that some of that travel was even related to having to go to pick up children from universities who would otherwise found public transportation means home, and that wasn't an option this year. So we've been informed of a little over 30 staff members needing to quarantine as a result of Thanksgiving travel. But again, not necessarily just for pleasure. There were reasons behind the need to go and leave the state, which also then necessitated quarantine. So a little bit of a different information than what was initially shared with us is how it's playing out.
Thank you.
I got to say, I'm really glad you asked that question, Lisa, because I would, this, yeah, what actually happened is more consistent with my understanding of the level of professionalism of our teachers. That makes a lot of sense. Yeah, Erin?
I agree with what's been said, and what I am thinking is that it's not an either-or here because of the timing of this. If the expectation is that you need to be in school on January 11th, if someone needs to travel, they still can. They just need to allow enough time to have that quarantine before then. So I support the pause for the week of the 4th.
So I think I'm hearing a pretty good consensus around the 4th and frankly, the 11th. And I kind of want to summarize and make sure that we're getting lots of heads nodding. What I'm hearing is we understand that the 4th, taking the week of the 4th as full remote across the district allows us to get some testing in to understand where we are in terms of necessary quarantines and et cetera. And that is with a purpose of trying to be back full, well, to the hybrid in-person model that we have for the week of the 11th. And I think one of the things that, one of the themes that comes out to me today is we want to know what's going to happen ahead of time. And so we're giving guidance about what's going to happen ahead of time, but of course, we're doing this in a pandemic, and that means uncertainty. So the more that all of us can do to reduce that uncertainty, the better chance we have of actually realizing what we just said is our preference for the 4th and 11th. Some things that all of us can do are travel if necessary only. And if we need to travel, then do it in a way that we can get back and get through a quarantine before the 11th. For staff members and teachers, if you can notify the administration ahead of time that you expect to travel and that you expect to need a substitute, that is going to help them plan for that now instead of later, and that will help us get there. And for all of us, we're going to have to remember that while we are recommending a, or excuse me, remote on the week of the 4th and hybrid in-person on the week of the 11th, we know that when we get to that week of 11th, we don't really know what the situation is going to be yet. And we may have to do some of the things that we've talked about before, and which means, you know, it may be the morning of that we find out that, nope, we're not going to actually have that class. We as a board, if I'm hearing us correctly, are saying, we understand that risk. We understand that there are some downsides to that, some educational downsides to that. But that is the choice that we're making among an imperfect set of choices in order to get more people in person more frequently. I've seen a lot of nodding, but does anyone want to react to that or contradict what I just said?
That was a great summary, Mark, of where we are.
Okay.
So succinctly, it sounds like the proposal is January 4th, a fully remote environment with testing being implemented that week. January 11th, in-person instruction, unless there is a bubble or a pod that has to be quarantined, which really was the way we were operating prior to Thanksgiving break, with an understanding that the default is in-person instruction the week of January 11th. Everyone should expect to be in person unless there is some unique quarantine requirements that occur.
Can I ask, so I, that is how I hear it as well, but I wonder, we don't know what the metrics are going to be at that time. So I'm assuming we're going to be continuing to monitor that. If there's some unusual spike, we would look at that a week of the 11th differently. Is that correct?
The Metrics, the Metrics Committee continues to function.
Right.
And, and they're, right, safety is always paramount. So yes.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right, and I think what I heard is people want more understanding of what we want to happen weeks out.
Yes.
And we all know, again, we're still in a pandemic, and we don't know what's going to happen. And so if things happen like metrics or quarantines that we don't expect or changes in guidelines from IDPH, we don't know. We don't know. But yes. So, yeah. Mine, I think, relates to Amy's question. So should we, the board, have a meeting earlier in the month? Because I was looking at our calendar. We have a meeting on the 11th of January. Should we try to move that? Is that something that we can handle situationally? Well, it's going to come up fast. So I would, I'd put out there that the idea that, I assume, I guess, shouldn't assume, that we're willing to have a meeting on the 4th if we had to. So.
So the Metrics Committee will continue to meet? And I guess my assumption is we'll call a board meeting if we need to, but we have guidance that we have just agreed upon. And barring an unforeseen challenge, we shouldn't need that meeting, but we would have it if we needed to.
Maybe the operational guidance is that we all keep our calendars clear, but we don't schedule anything yet. All right. That gets us to next week, the week of the 14th, which we'd also like to have a recommendation. Anyone want to start the conversation on the 14th? Erin?
Um, so earlier I talked about how the scramble is real. I also think that the social-emotional struggle for many of our students is real. And now that we've approved a pause for the week of January 4th, there will be kids in grades three through eight, if we were not in school next week, who would have gone seven weeks without gracing the door of the classroom. And I know that three of those weeks were vacations or not, they weren't vacations, they were breaks between Thanksgiving break and winter break. But seven weeks is a long time for a lot of these kids. So my recommendation is that next week is the hybrid in-person plan for pre-K through eight with the understanding in the community that your kid might have a class that is going to have to be remote, just based on who's quarantining and how the staffing shakes out, and that you might not find that out until that day. You might have to go pick up your kid in the middle of the day if that class gets kicked to remote. And that's just, and that's just part of our new normal. But I think even if we had half the kids had to be pulled out, that would be half the kids that would be there. And just as like, just as I am a boots-on-the-ground with what it's like to be a person working in a school during this, without being too specific, I can tell you that I have had a front row seat for someone who struggles with social-emotional issues and that being in person is the, is a lifesaver for that person. That's my recommendation.
Thoughts, Lisa?
I just want to tee up the choice we're making. I just want to back up again. I'll withhold like where I am, but thank you for that, Erin. Like, so the administration has requested that next week, the week of the 14th, we are only in-person pre-K to 2. So that is option number one. Option number two is what Erin just relayed. We go full hybrid model, meaning pre-K 8, with the caveat that we understand the switching back and forth could have some learning loss and could have the fire drill that Erin has just laid out. Or the other option is all remote, right? So those are the three choices on the ground. I've heard one board member express full hybrid next week. So I'm just interested in whatever other people say.
Yeah, and can I add one more just sort of fact to that, which is when we talked about this a week ago, what we heard was we really were unsure that we were going to be able to staff that week. It sounded like there were going to be a lot of classrooms that would wind up going remote all the time and that the scramble would be, you know, all over the kitchen, not just in the frying pan. But, but it sounds like what we found out since then is that we've, we've got a, maybe a little bit better ability to, to staff. Is that, Heather, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so that was my understanding. What's the truth?
I think we have the ability to staff our known needs right now. The unknown is the worrisome part and the unpredictability of that, right? And the only other thing I'll offer is that we're not seeing a decrease in the number of staff being exposed or needing to quarantine, right? Like, it is a continuous trend in the wrong direction from what we would like to see.
Okay. So, sorry, Lisa asked a question. Ellen, what was your response?
I'm actually, I'm in agreement with Erin. I realize this is not perfect for either what the teachers and support staff would prefer. I understand that it's, you know, it's not the shortest notice because we, I think we all were pretty clear the last time we spoke about our desire, about what we wanted to see happen if it could possibly happen. And, and I have read and have listened and understand from the teachers, the experts, administrations, a point of view of consistency, the desire for consistency for teaching, I forget the other, the other word that you have been using.
Predictability.
Predictability, thank you. Predictability and consistency. I do understand that, but I agree with Erin that in this particular situation, right now, you know, there is no perfection. There's no perfect solution. There's the best we can do at the moment. And at the moment, we are looking at the potential of seven weeks for some of these kiddos. And that is just, you know, when you look at the social-emotional piece to that, and I also have firsthand experience with kiddos that deal with that social-emotional piece being just so difficult. And that one week could make all the difference for so many kids. I just, and I've heard it again and again from parents. So with that in mind, from that perspective, I think it is worth it. And I think that what I started to say to you before, that to the administration and to the teachers, I think the majority of the, of the parents who haven't spoken out and complained or whatever would be very grateful for the opportunity, be it imperfect, even if it were imperfect and even if it was part of the week and taken away the rest of the week. Like, even if we tried, that just even trying to get back into school for this one week before the break, I think it would be really appreciated, and I think it's the right thing to do right now.
Other thoughts from board members since? Yep.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, hyperbole, I'm prone to hyperbole. Sorry. So no, I think it's a really good idea to get them back into school next week. And whatever we can do, we should do, and appreciate what the administration has done in making that possible.
Lisa? So I'll turn my perspective in. I think it's a good idea to go back. And I want to say that I think that we would say that we prefer going back understanding that there are risks associated with that, right? That we have been told that the disruption can take a toll on kind of the consistency of learning and that there may be these, Erin, you have to come to school to pick up your kid, or that you might find out at 7:00 a.m. or 7:30 that we're going, a classroom is going to remote. And that by saying that we would like in-person instruction, we are saying when we weigh the risks and the benefits, we are saying that there is a greater benefit for the students to be in person than the downsides. And so that's where I land as well.
Right.
Mostly just what Lisa just said, so I'll try to say it quickly. Even a few days ago, it seemed like the needle was on the side of, it was just going to be too guaranteed that it was going to be chaotic. And I think a lot of work went into, from the administration's standpoint, from the teachers doing their best to come in as often as they can, that we moved to the needle being just on the side of, it will be disruptive, but it's probably going to work. And like I said, a week ago, the numbers were just a little bit on the other side. I think it sounds like the numbers are just a little bit on this side. Given that, the benefits, again, the seven-week thing really is hard for me to accept. But if that's what we had to do, that's what we'd have to do. But if there is a way that we can potentially mitigate that, that I think that's important. And it sounds like we're... And it sounds like we're on that cusp, but there's, it's possible. And because of that, I think that it's important that we do open up the school.
I, I agree. I, it's, it's hard. We hear what you've all been saying. And so this is not an easy decision. I, I think coming back on the eleventh is going to be harder if kids do not have the chance to be in school at all for such a long stretch. You think about a summer break and coming back and revisiting routines and relationships that this one week of touchstone with being in person could be powerful. And I think our default has to be if we, if we can be in school, for those who choose it, we are. But I, I hear the struggle and I think the community needs to know that it's the risks and that it may be, you know, last minute phone calls of being at home. And just incredibly deep appreciation for how much work we're asking in making this decision.
Well said as well. And I think the other thing is that we've heard also loud and clear that there, that you know, this is the last week before winter break. It is, it is not a week when, you know, it's a, it's a week which is difficult pedagogically in any year. And it will not be better this year. But there are benefits beyond just the pedagogical that I think I hear people pointing to, whether it's the social emotional for kids who have been made especially fragile by the, by the situation, or even just the structured time that all kids need over time, that that, that there's a belief that will be helpful. That said, what I'm hearing is nobody thinks that this is the perfect solution. Nobody, as far as I can hear, doesn't hear the other side of the decision and the considerations. And I think we all probably don't fully appreciate, but at least intellectually understand that we are asking a lot again. And Carrie's point from earlier, we are asking that of people who, like all of us, are having real trouble filling up that bucket again. And so I'm hoping, I'm hoping personally, and I suspect everybody is, that we're doing something that balances the need of the kids to fill up their bucket and that the staff and administrators will be able to get some bucket filling time over the winter break. And that while it's trying for all of us, this will wind up being a solution that works and hopefully is the best solution. Does that make sense? Carrie, you've, you've asked and others have asked for clarity going into the future. Do you feel like we've provided that?
I feel like you have. You still will need to vote on that after we do public comment.
So I think that is the end of the incredibly long strategy section. I'll turn it back over to Lisa.
Thank you very much. Amy, do you have an update for us on equity work?
At this point, I do not, but I would recommend that we all consider start reading the book over winter break. Dr. Logan has expressed availability pretty rapidly. And so I think I would like to schedule that in January. And so if we can all just begin thinking about reading the book and then we'll get that on the schedule.
Great. Thank you.
With some format information
Is there any new business? So public comment will be anywhere from 35 to 45 minutes. Do we need to take another five minute break? I think we do.
Thank you. Just again, a reminder that we're still live streaming during this break.
Today?
Well, it'll be Katie Lee and myself.
All right. You did such a good job, Katie. You get to do it again?
She got her promotion.
Happy to do so.
Okay, so are there any community members that wish to speak? That's right. The district has requested public comments be emailed to publiccomment@willmet39.org. Tony, have we received any public comments via email?
We have.
Great. Would you mind reading them, please?
Absolutely. Julie Moran. Dear Dr. Kremeskoli and D39 board members, thank you for all your time, effort and determination with getting our kids in school for in-person learning. I'm writing this email to ask if D39 has considered surveying the parents of fifth or eighth graders again about half day every day in-person instruction versus hybrid full days. In the summer, when, when asked if in a survey, I don't think we fully understood the dynamics or differences to each approach.
Excuse me, Tony, can you speak louder? I can't hear you.
Oh, absolutely. Not a problem. Also, I think parents were under the assumption that we would have alternating Mondays in the full day schedule. Because students eat lunch alone and participate in non-core subjects remotely, it seems to me that having half of the students go home, go to school in the morning and the other half attend school in the afternoon with lunch, non-core subjects at home would benefit them with more in-person learning focused on the core subjects. I understand when Eka and Kennelworth schools are offering the half-day, everyday in-person instruction and is working well with the kids getting more in-person instruction. Is that a consideration that D39 could offer or at least ask parents in a survey to see what would be better for most? I understand that there is a special board meeting on Monday and request that it be considered.
Public comment by Sarah Lepitis. Dr. Kremeskoli and the Board of Education, I listened to most of the special board meeting last night and I felt compelled to email in support of the District 39 teachers. After listening to the public comment, I was embarrassed for my community. My children are attending school in person, so I understand supporting in-person learning and wanting children in school. That being said, I felt sad and disappointed when parents were mentioning tax dollars as the reason for students to be in school. This is an insult to teachers as teachers continue to work likely harder than ever during this pandemic. I also felt sad that parents would mention moving to another district or mention being disappointed with our district. I am a teacher and know how hard teachers are working right now, whether they are teaching remotely or in person. This school year has thrown many curveballs and teachers are doing what they do best, adapting and supporting their students. I have been nothing but impressed with my children's teachers in first grade and fifth grade. My children are loving school and learning as much as they ever have. In fact, I'm sure they are learning resilience and independence more than ever because of the changes they have encountered this school year. This would not be possible with their wonderful, not be possible with their wonderful compassion and creative teachers. That being said, I also want to express my disappointment with the board. After all of these public comments, not one board member soaked up in support of the teachers. In fact, when the board voted down the proposal to plan the schedule into January and work on a week-to-week basis, I felt the stress that teachers are under and the added stress than they will be under with the uncertainty. Planning with all of the considerations to be made this school year is already challenging. And when you are planning for the unknown, it makes it even more stressful and tedious. Dr. Kremeskoli stressed how much teachers need to plan when pivoting from remote to in-person. I'm disappointed the board would go against the wishes of the administration and plan week-to-week rather than allow teachers to know what's coming. This also creates less consistency for students as they don't know what to expect. In addition, I'm not certain why the board would be reluctant to continue with an adaptive pause for the safety of staff and students. Is in-person instruction better than remote instruction? Yes. Is remote instruction challenging for families? Yes. Have the schools been following protocol? Yes. But we have all seen the numbers lately and we all know people who have gathered with more people than they should have for Thanksgiving and are planning to travel or, or gather again for winter break. Why not be cautious and safe rather than push staff and students back to the building in the midst of a surge? All in all, the purpose of this letter is to support the District 39 teachers. Please recognize the hard work, compassion and time that teachers have put in this school year. Please consider the safety of staff and students when making decisions about an adaptive pause. Thank you.
Jeremy and Shannon Page. Good morning. We listened to the board meeting last evening and understand and appreciate the complicated dynamics that the district is working through as it seeks to strike a balance between in-person and hybrid remote learning and the toll COVID-related absences are taking on the development and implementation of a consistent schedule. We also greatly appreciate the arduous efforts expended by the board and administration in creating what we view as a safe environment for the continued in-person learning for our son who is a second grade student at Central. While we share the angst reflected in the board's comments regarding the difficult decisions being made as to who most requires in-person instruction, we're not encouraged by the week-by-week approach that the board has adopted at this juncture for early and need-based learners. Besides the havoc it wreaks with parent schedules, we can state unequivocally that both our son and his peers are becoming more and more discouraged and disconnected by the uncertainty caused by the board's decision. Younger children more than, more than anyone crave and need consistency and the decision reached last evening to go week-by-week robs them of the structure and confidence that consistency creates. As with the decision reached by the City Schools of New York, we strongly request that the board adopt a single policy of constant in-class learning for early and need-based learners rather than the flavor of the week approach that is currently in place. Thank you for your consideration of these comments.
Public comment by Christina Ballister. Hello all. I wrote you earlier in the week before the board meeting expressing our concerns about shifting to e-learning for our children, particularly the five-year-old's prior experience with his lack of focus after a half hour of watching teachers. Sure enough, this morning he was very down and go, and about going to the recreation center to do Zoom again. He threw somewhat of a tantrum in the car and I had to really sell that there was just one more day until Monday back in school. He made sure to tell me that he only wanted to go to Ramona's for school and be in his classroom. I shared this with his teacher in the event he disappears on Zoom or starts fading during the curriculum tomorrow. I had to promise him a toy at Target to get him there and through to the weekend. You do what you have to do right. As for my eight-year-old, by day two, he was having difficulty sustaining his attention by trending off with emoji artwork on his iPad, also squirming around, unable to sit still for too long during homework because for two days he's been sitting still in his chair looking at a screen. Albeit a difficult decision by the board, he has to now do this for another week when his teacher has been present every day since school started, as we have both our other kids' teachers. I am grateful all three teachers have treated their attendance as a priority. I acknowledge that if there are staff shortages due to people truly being sick or needing to be there while their kids are at home and they have to take sick days, I do not question the veracity of the reason. However, it feels a bit like punishment for the entire grades from three to eight to deal with these spotty issues, which is really overboard and unduly burdensome on the families and children impacted by it. There must be a way to reconsider that those teachers who are out for any period of time have their classes shift to e-learning in those weeks. This broad-stroke remedy is faulty as old, older siblings get stuck at home and are feeling frustrated already. I am glad early learners and those with comprehensive needs are going back at all. Let's not do this again, though, for the other kids next week to appease those pushing for it in absence of supporting data. When you meet with the metrics committee in the morning, please do not give in to the incessant badgering from the union and create another hodgepodge of unmotivated and discouraged children after all the good work that has been accomplished in the last few months. Please be creative and find a way, keep pushing the envelope with ideas. You can do this as you have already shown, it's possible. Beyond the staffing condition, there is question, there is really no other reason to consider the e-learning platform for any of the grades with regard to the community numbers as once again our concern is what is occurring within the four walls of the school and not being mandated by what occurs outside of the school. Unless it takes, it makes its way in, which it has not, and for a very long timeframe, I might add. And each week, more media outlets and articles published by physicians has solidified the undeniable truth that schools for K8 are the safest place for students. Arguably, it is also the safest place for staff irrespective of the fear they feel. We all feel fear in doing our jobs and shopping for groceries or getting gas, and this is impacting all of us parents as we raise our children. In the school setting, though, there are mandates and well-functioning safety measures, so again.
That was three minutes.
Megan Scully. Dear D39 board, I write in support of all of our incredible D39 teachers. This pandemic is unprecedented for everyone and I can't think of no other profession that has, has had to adapt so quickly to this new environment. Our teachers should be supported and praised for the work that they have done over the last nine months, whether remote or in-person, to educate our kids. Our teachers are what make our schools so amazing and in turn, our community is such a great place to live. Our teachers have been able to overcome fear, sadness and anxiety and still put on a brave, welcoming face to our students every single day. Their bravery and determination to the students and their communities should not go unnoticed. Education in this environment at any grade level and distance, remote or in-person, has not been perfect. But to place blame on teachers for inherent challenges occurring in this new environment is unacceptable.
Comment by Lori Fisher. Dear Dr. Kremeskoli, the COVID Metrics Advisory Board and the District 39 Board of Education, I'm writing to thank you for the position you took to pause in-person learning through the holidays and resume a week after classes begin in January. I'm grateful that you're protecting our teachers and students during these weeks while we are experiencing a surge within a surge of COVID. We have a seventh grade boy at Willmet Junior High, and although we chose in-person hybrid, it was with the trust that District 39 would only have in-person classes when the community and regional metrics allowed, meaning at the very least when we were out of the red warning zone. During the COVID surge before Thanksgiving, the number of cases in school increased exponentially as demonstrated by the many notes sent home by the district. Dr. Fauci and other renowned epidemicologists, public health experts have made it very clear how important it is to prioritize kids being in school during the pandemic whenever possible. But with the critical and necessary to point out exception that when the COVID numbers in the community are high, it will be mirrored in the local schools and there will be, and was, an increased number of cases and risk of contagion and spread in our classrooms. During a surge, they agree, we need to pause in-person school until the numbers come back down. Many argue that there's no evidence of this in-school transmission in District 39. Without testing, we just do not know this. Nutria's rapid testing program is clearly demonstrating asymptomatic and pre-symptomatic cases who would have been in school had the test not identified them before they walked through those doors. I am grateful that Dr. Kremeskoli and the advisory board have recognized how important testing is and are providing the same rapid saliva test to our students and teachers by mid-January. This in addition to the now available access to MBRP CR testing are substantial additions to the school's safety. So what is the cost benefit of having a single week or two of in-person school right now during the holiday surge of COVID, just before we have rapid testing and right when numbers are high? I strongly believe it's short-sighted to push for the couple in-person days. We should remain virtual until we return in January. Our teachers showed up for our kids this semester in a way that was heroic, in my opinion. They risked getting a life-threatening virus for the continued in-person education of our kids. So when such a substantial improvement to the District 39 COVID mitigation strategy is only weeks away, let's not take anybody's health risk for granted before these new important safety measures are implemented. One last suggestion, please establish specific thresholds on the District 39 dashboard for this coming semester instead of zones. This simple clarification would take all of us out of the anxiety stress of not knowing what is going to happen from week to week if a framework of specific numbers and actions associated with them is laid out. It would unify our community and curb the need for the charged subjective weekly update. Everyone has an opinion about if we should be in-person or pivot to remote when the numbers are surging?
That's three minutes.
Barbara says out Zirkowski. Please make your decision based on the science and what the CDC is saying concerning COVID spread in the schools. Dr. Redfield has recently reiterated that schools are not responsible for the spread of COVID. Below is a link to an article from a few weeks ago. Our community is fortunate to have the resources to keep our school community safe while bringing our children back to full-time in, in-person learning. Please follow the silence and not allow fear to guide your decisions. And then she references the article.
Comment by Peg Stedman. Dear District 39 School Board members, there are plenty of community members and parents who are concerned that the metrics don't give the negative views held by some of the letters read at the last school board meeting. We value good teachers and administrators and we're afraid we might lose them if we don't listen to their concerns. We trust their professional judgment. We value the phenomenal jobs they do each day under challenging conditions. Of the thousands of families and invested community members in the district, we fear that they may be hearing from only a fraction. Many community members pay the same or more property taxes in support of our schools than many of the parents of current students, yet because they might not use social media as such, their voices may not be heard. because they might not use social media as such, their voices may not be heard. We have a vested interest in keeping our schools strong and healthy in order to maintain and attract quality teachers, support staff, and administrators.
Shawna Smith. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to express our thoughts in this public manner. I cannot imagine the weight of all the choices and considerations that have to be made on behalf of our students and our teachers on a daily basis. Thank you for your time, energy, and thought you are putting into all the recommendations and decisions. I think it's important for all of us to remember that teachers are human and not machines or superheroes, as they're often referred to. They are people who have chosen one of the most important jobs in the world to educate, support, and nurture our children. Maybe along the way, we've forgotten what their jobs truly are and now are expecting them to be something completely different in a completely different and challenging environment. It's my hope that we understand that teachers are a part of our community, too. While we look at what is best for our students, I'm hoping we also move teachers to the top of the list as well. Check in on them, make it okay for them to express how they feel, support them, and listen. Teaching is not just what they do, it's who they are. Let's appreciate them and express our gratitude. They are giving more than their best right now. With heartfelt gratitude for all teachers, staff, and administrators.
Comment by Nora Croft. Hello, our family has a fourth grader at Ramona and a seventh grader at WJHS. I am writing to voice my support of the District 39 Administration for pivoting to remote instruction except for districts' neatest and youngest learners. This is a measured and evidence-based decision that keeps our community as safe as possible at this time. Thank you to the District 39 Administration, staff, and teachers for their utmost concern for the most vulnerable learners in our district. I believe these children should be the district's priority for in-person instruction. Thank you.
Amy Bowen. My husband and I stand strongly behind the faculty and staff in the school district. My son is going remote, and I assure you that the quality of education he receives now is outstanding, just as when it was in-person. The data, which I monitor every day, has concerning infection rates, not only in Wilmatt but in surrounding areas. Plus, experts are already suggesting no holiday travel this month. I encourage the board to consider the best practices as suggested by disease experts and not cave to the community pressure. I have supported in-person learning, but now is especially the time to err on the side of caution. The schools have stayed safe up till this point, but I fear that if the board caves to in-person pressure, that our schools will see loss. Thanks.
Public comment by Brian Novalee. Dear Board of Directors, thank you for continuing to provide public access to the Metric Advisory Meeting. On Friday morning's call, it was nice to hear a more balanced discussion acknowledging that remote learning is a worse outcome for our students and that many teachers also want to be in-person. While the board paused in-person due to safety concerns, it seems that staffing issues are currently the main impediment. Parents are trying to understand what is driving this suddenly insurmountable teacher shortage. Why are there so many known absences for the week of 12/14? Why was the district caught off guard by the significant number of teachers that traveled over Thanksgiving? We all understand it is very challenging to coordinate staffing right now, but it would be great to hear the committee spend more time focusing on solutions. For example, some parents have found the process to apply to volunteer a bit onerous. Perhaps the district could streamline the application by suspending requirements such as providing undergraduate graduate transcripts until the end of the school year. Wineka, Kennelworth, and private schools are executing in-person every day, and it is hard to understand why Wilmatt cannot provide the same to our children. Schools are a critical part of this community, and it is important not to fall behind. Just to be clear, parents and students value in-person learning and mental health over a predictable schedule. Thank you for all your time and effort.
Anne Wagner. After listening to last week's board meeting, I feel compelled to write a note of gratitude and support to the teachers of District 39. Whether we have chosen in-person or remote learning for our families, I think it is important for all of us to remember that teachers are not only working tirelessly to safely educate our children, but they are also navigating their own personal situations through these pandemic times. As an all-remote family, I know the decision about the next couple of weeks will not make a difference in my kids' current school days, but I fear if the negativity continues, it will deeply impact their education in the long term if we're unable to retain the dedicated and highly qualified teachers of District 39. So the teachers and staff of District 39, thank you to all. Thank you for all that you do for our children, and please know that your efforts are recognized and very much appreciated.
Comment by Deborah Manoff Thalig. To all the district's teachers and staff, I wanted all of you to know that your efforts, dedication, and commitment to our children and community is not being taken for granted. I see every day just how difficult the present circumstances are for you. You had to wrestle with choices no one should have to make. You continue to show up for our kids and support them through this difficult school year. You are valued, appreciated, and adored. Yours in endless gratitude.
Jenny Rosine, Dawn Taylor, Nicole Peters. Dear Board, we would like to acknowledge the tremendous effort and collaboration that have gotten us to this point. The District 39 community has reimagined what schools look like and adapted to a school year unlike any other. And every prediction about how this virus would impact schooling has proved inaccurate. We have all experienced challenges and frustrations, but we've also had a great deal of success. Our fully remote program, built on lessons learned last spring, has provided robust virtual learning. Our in-person program has offered opportunities for face-to-face learning, collaboration, and community building, all while adhering to strict safety protocols, a notable feat given that many nearby districts never opened for in-person learning. The goal of the WEA is to provide the best possible instruction for our students, instruction that is consistent, well-planned, and accessible to as many students as possible. It is our position that the way to achieve this is by having as much advanced notice as possible if we are to pivot between in-person and remote learning. Our hope is that the board makes and announces a decision at Monday's meeting about the remaining time before winter break and the weeks after winter break, so teachers can prepare the best possible instruction for whatever mode of learning the board chooses. So far, our schools appear to be safe, even with the local case numbers climbing to worrisome heights. The district, in partnership with CCDPH, has not found any evidence of in-school transmission of the virus. A credit to everyone who has helped to make sure safety protocols are upheld. It is important, though, to discuss the disruptive impact on this level of community spread in our instruction. As long as local metrics remain in the elevated range, it is inevitable that teachers and students will be exposed to the virus in the community and need to quarantine. We know the board faces a difficult decision. We want to make sure everyone understands the reality of teaching and learning in this environment where a pivot can come without warning, and teachers and students must scramble to adjust. We are already seeing this happen. Classrooms have been quarantined and returned to in-person instruction, only to be immediately quarantined again. In-person learners have spent classroom days on Zoom because their teachers are in quarantine. Teachers have had to change their lesson plans on a moment's notice. Students who are quarantined without their class can end up with weeks of asynchronous work. This uncertainty and interruption is incredibly stressful for students and teachers. Quality instruction should never be compromised. Our students deserve the best. We urge the board to weigh predictably and consistency in their deliberations to ensure instruction is better than what some board members might believe is good enough. At the end of winter break, teachers and students will certainly be eager to get back into the classroom and return to a normal routine. Knowing how we will be teaching after break will allow that return to be more successful in the long run. New screening and testing programs after the break will allow us to resume in-person learning as safely as possible. Thank you for considering our position and allowing us to continue to provide the highest-quality educational experience for our students.
Comment by Jacob Shore. My name is Jacob Shore. My daughters are in kindergarten and third grade remote learning at Ramona. Since the pandemic began, many teachers in District 39 have expressed their dismay at the vocal groups of parents attacking teachers as obstacles to in-person learning. Nevertheless, it was still startling at the November 3rd Board of Education meeting to hear so many negative and inflammatory public comments demanding in-person learning. It is totally unacceptable to scapegoat teachers for foreseeable staffing issues created by the Board of Education's reopening plans. I hope that the Board of Education will embrace civility and kindness and not read any more public comments that attack our teachers. What we should be doing is listening to our teachers, and yet our teachers' opinions were not properly considered in the formation of the in-person and remote learning plans. The WA members voted 80% against the reopening plan. On October 16, 2020, only two weeks into full in-person learning, 51% of PK-8 grade-certified teachers said in-person hybrid learning had a negative impact on their personal well-being. 36% said in-person had no impact, with only 13% saying it had a positive impact. Since that survey, positive COVID tests have grown exponentially in our community and rose alarmingly enough in our schools for an adaptive pause. It is inexplicable that the Metrics Advisory Group failed to use the adaptive pause to follow up with teachers on the impact of in-person learning on their well-being and to develop a teacher morale metric. Accordingly, it is an effort to gauge and improve teacher morale. Please begin a weekly survey of how in-person learning is impacting teachers' well-being and incorporate those findings into the weekly metrics report. Finally, I want to say thank you to all the teachers and support staff and administration staff and janitorial staff and anyone else who has kept our schools teaching our children during this unprecedented pandemic. Teachers are the backbone of our community. They are neighbors. They are listening to what we are saying about them. Thank you.
Rachel Hilgeman. Hello, Dr. Kremescoli and board members. Please advocate to reopen in-person learning for grades three through eighth for the week of December 14th. Also, please explore strategies to avoid a preemptive shutting down the week after winter break. The remote experience is simply not living up to the praise that it gets from those who stand behind it. Referring to it as a robust and consistent alternative is misleading. Many children are suffering in a variety of ways when the in-person experience is not available. Please stand behind the voices of the community that you represent and vote to reopen the week of December 14. While one week may seem like no big deal, it's huge for the kids. To potentially be away from teachers and peers for six weeks is something that we can all agree is not advisable. Thank you for your continued service and commitment to this cause. I am very grateful to all of you.
Comment by Julie Hanahan. District 39 Board of Education members, several things I heard during last Monday's board meeting, both from board members and from public comment, raised concerns for me, and I hope you will consider another perspective. First, I understand that the recommendation to go remote through January 8th is in part for predictability for children, families, and teachers. Several board members discounted that reason by saying effectively 2020 has shown that nothing is predictable and we are used to dealing with uncertainty. I object to this out of hand. Children need to know what to expect. While we have all had to learn to adjust regularly, if we can inject some predictability in their lives, we should do so. Furthermore, as Dr. Kremescoli said, it is very different for teachers to plan in-person lessons than it is to plan for remote lessons. And for the 5A teachers needing to know if they're planning for full remote or hybrid, I imagine makes an even bigger difference. If the goal is the best education possible for our children, I would think affording their teachers the opportunity to plan appropriate lessons would support that goal. I also heard several people, both on the board and not, voice support for an idea of taking classes remote is necessary based on staffing. I gather these decisions would be made on a class-by-class and a day-by-day basis. This is a horrible idea, and I urge you to abandon it. While it may seem feasible on the elementary level, once you get beyond fourth grade, that becomes much more complicated. One of my seventh-grader's teachers was out sick, heroically teaching from home much of the time, and an adult needed to supervise her in-person students as she taught Zoom. If no one was available to do that, would all five classes in the team be remote at the last minute and find out every morning if they're in person or not? When we chose in-person instruction, I understood the committee would review a variety of metrics on a weekly basis and make decisions on the need to pivot between remote and in-person instruction based on the numbers. I further understood that staffing and the availability of substitutes would be among those metrics. It sounds like we don't have sufficient staff for substitutes to support in-person learning, which is why the committee has made its recommendation. Why is the board changing the plan now? It certainly doesn't sound like the setting for effective teaching or learning. Finally, the number of public comments last Monday questioning teacher absences and seeming to accuse them of staging a sick-out was awful. In eight years as a District 39 parent, I've never encountered a teacher who was anything short of professional and dedicated to her or his students. For members of this community to accuse them of such dishonesty, especially when the same kinds of staffing shortages have caused schools to close across the country, it is unacceptable. To make matters worse, I did not hear a single member of the board praise our teachers and their Herculean efforts to make this school year work. Each of you had made multiple comments praising the administrators' work, and that praise is deserved, but you sat by and listened to our teachers being derided and said nothing. I do expect you to argue with the public commentators, but a statement of recognition or support would have been appropriate. Our teachers were disheartened, to put it mildly, by the comments that were made Monday night, and now one of you stepped up to defend them or even thank them. I hope you remedy that this week before the break.
Lisa Breen. Meeting members, I'm going to cut to the chase in the essence of time. District 39 is on the verge of crumbling. The parental community is now aware that the issue at hand is not about COVID safety and/or risks within schools. Transmission of COVID within schools is extremely low per the recent data. It's also not entirely about staffing, but rather the union's push to appease its members who want to be remote. I've watched as the credibility and reputation of District 39 plummeted in the last few weeks. It is as though a curtain has been pulled back and the transparency of what is going on is clearly visible. It is incredibly sad to see. Our neighboring Nutria, Feeder districts, Kennelworth, Wineka, Glencoe, and Northfield, as well as private schools, are outperforming us. They are providing more consistent in-person learning than us. They are not worried about the predictability of schedules. Every day of in-person learning counts. Our community of parents is now suspicious of the motives of our educators. Is this what our administration and teachers want? Does this make them feel proud and accomplished? Do they think our students and feel like do they think of their students and feel like they're doing their best to help them advance in their education? District 39 used to stand for excellence. Unemployment in this district was a coveted attainment. I strive for excellence. I encourage excellence in my children. I tell them to always strive to be their best self. I want to ask the union members, teachers, and administrators if they truly feel like they are their best selves. Do you feel proud of your choices? Do you feel validity in choosing your own personal or travel needs over the needs of young people you choose to educate? Can you take a good, long look in the mirror and be proud of how you handled the situation? And that you are truly doing your absolute best for the children in this community. As a parent and a teacher, I'm not proud. Our teachers, our children, are not being prioritized. They're being overlooked and left behind. This would not be the mark that I would want to leave if I worked in District 39. I would not want to be average or worse, a failure at my job. I'm too strong and prideful for that. When the COVID smoke clears, I'm afraid if we continue to go down the path we're currently on, the one where the students' needs are not the highest priority, we will be left with a catastrophe. We will be left with an entire community of students who are academically far behind, anxious, lonely, and stressed. I will be thankful that I stood up for them, that I fought to do right by them. Is this how you will feel? Will you feel like you made the right choices for the students? Will you feel like you stood up and did the right thing for them? Perhaps you don't. Perhaps you have to carry the weight of guilt failing an entire community of children. It's a tough choice. Hopefully, you're strong enough to make the right one for children. Also, I have a couple more by Lisa until the three minutes are up. I wanted to address the concern about the low number of subs in the district. I personally filled out the online application and was shocked at the lengthy process, including needing to include college graduate school transcripts. Perhaps if we have volunteers who have already-
You said those two were from the same people?
They are.
Okay.
Comment by Erin McShane Smith. Dear Board of Education, it is our teachers, staff, and administrators that make this district an amazing one. We must take into consideration their needs and feelings when evaluating how to move through this pandemic. It is essential they feel supported and comfortable with what we are asking them to do in order for them to provide the care and education we have grown accustomed to them providing to our children. Thank you.
Christopher Wazork. While researching how our neighboring districts have chosen to handle the COVID crisis, I found this quote from David Napier, a Glencoe board member from back in August. Quote, "I don't think at the K-8 level there is an adequate substitute for in-person learning, especially those students in South School K-2 and our seventh and eighth graders that are preparing to go into high school where the stakes are higher," end quote. I further discovered that despite pressure from their teachers to do otherwise, every other Nutria, Feeder district has resisted the pressure temptation to go remote learning, and especially so when it comes for the instruction of core subjects. Given that every other district has managed to provide significantly greater core instruction to their entering Nutria students, what plans does District 39 have in the next 12 months to keep Wilmatt seventh graders from placing behind in their neighboring peers next November? As well as to prepare our eighth graders to compete successfully against better-prepared classmates next fall? I submit that time is up for dithering with this remote learning experiment. These students need to change in your program immediately. Need a change in their program.
Comment by Vida Volgers. Dear Dr. Kremescoli and District 39 Board members, I am writing to you about four issues that have been on my mind for some time. I believe that these are issues that would be of concern to most parents who have chosen in-person instruction for their children. One, alternating Mondays. Before the school year started, we were told that students in the hybrid model would be going to school on alternating Mondays. What happened to this? Neither I nor any of the other parents I've spoken to have any idea. The only week that our children attended Monday classes was to make up for the days off due to Halloween and Election Day. I've totaled up my children's instruction days, and as of December 7th, they will have experienced less than 29% in-person instruction. A far cry from the 50% that we were told was planned. What happened to change this plan and why was the change never communicated?
What happened to this change, to change this plan, and why was the change never communicated? Two, more in-person instruction for all grades. Neighboring school districts, example Kennelworth and Winneka, have had in-person instruction every day for all elementary grades, kindergarten through eighth. Winneka's Junior High School has accomplished this by providing daily in-person instruction of core subjects to half-classes split between morning and afternoons and teaching the non-core subjects remotely during the student's balance of the day. By doing this, they use their students' limited class time most effectively, wasting none of it on lunch or other nonessential activities. Perhaps District thirty-nine might consider plans such as this for the second semester. Willmett seems to have singled out the younger grades and the special-needs children and neglected the rest. Three, map testing analysis. A considerable effort has gone into ongoing analysis of COVID nineteen metrics, but there has been no concomitable commitment, commitment, sorry, effort to measure the effect that this extended remote learning is having on our children's educational development. Surely, the fall map testing scores provide data to begin to assess this. The map reports sent out after the fall test were noticeably lacking the comparative metrics that have been included in all previous map test results. Specifically, the following data and analysis would be very valuable. A comparison of Willmett's map Fall twenty twenty test results to those from Fall twenty nineteen and also example from five years ago and broken down by grade. I have advanced degrees in mathematics and physics and am a professional in the modeling and statistical analysis. I would love the opportunity to contribute here. Seventh-grade students will be taking the Nutria placement tests in less than a year. Willmett, Willmett seventh graders could well find themselves at a considerable disadvantage to their peers from other feeder districts, such as those mentioned in two above, where the schools have successfully provided far more in-person core subject instruction in the year leading up to the test. Based upon my interpretation of map testing results from our children, it seems that their performance has declined significantly this year from a consistently high set of scores for the last past three years. If this is the case and is widespread in District thirty-nine community, we may do, we may be doing more damage to our children and their future educational opportunities than we presently realize. I suggest that it is at least.
Just want to note that she also sent in another comment, and if she's watching, she's welcome to submit that for next board meeting. We do have one last comment. Molly and Peter McDermott. To the Board of Education, thank you for your continued support and hard work in trying to keep our schools open for in-person learning. Please vote to reopen our schools and provide in-person learning for the weeks of December fourteenth and January fourth. In the last special session and metrics meeting, there was a considerable focus on creating a predictable schedule for our children. Yet, nothing of this school year has been predictable. Predictable is not one day in person, one day remote, one day virtual. One day is A, one day is B, but the next week B might be, might be A days to account for balance of the schedule. This has been our scheduled, thus scheduled thus far in District thirty-nine and is anything but predictable. If we truly care about predictable, we would have adopted Winneka's model of half-day, every-day in-person. It is simple and predictable, or Kennelworth's model, full day in-person every day. It's simple and predictable. It was clear from the metrics meeting that staffing is our biggest challenge in reopening the schools. How have our peers in the Nutria School District figured out staffing? How have we not? On November thirteenth, Winneka Superintendent established clear guidelines for how they would keep schools open after Thanksgiving by asking students and teachers not to travel over Thanksgiving holiday. The letter attached from the superintendent also recognized the importance of celebrating the holidays with loved ones, which may mean people need to travel and ask both teachers and students to do this during winter break. Following winter break, Winneka's schools will be remote for Week one, possibly two. Winneka's plan is predictable. Winneka's plan has students in-person learning daily last week. They will have students in-person this week and the week of December fourteen. All grades in Winneka's schools will have fifteen half-days of in-person learning since Thanksgiving break. Willmett's third through eighth graders will have zero days of in-person learning if we don't reopen the schools next week. The gap is growing and will soon be insurmountable if we don't address these issues and come up with alternative solutions to get our kids back in school. Thank you for your consideration of our concerns. And that is it.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna have our recommendations for action. The first is seeking approval for in-person instruction plan for the weeks of December fourteenth and January fourth.
If I read it that way, then we have the discussion.
We'll have discussions, so we'll seek a. Oh, right, so.
You want to move with the plan, Frank. So you want to say I move to.
Okay. All right, so I'll move as stated here. I move to approve in-person instruction for the weeks of December fourteenth and January fourth.
So actually, you'll seek a motion to improve, right, so we'll seek a motion to improve in-person instruction for the week of December fourteenth and fully remote for the week of January fourth.
That, that, that was what I was asking. Did I have to read it as written here? Because it's in the meeting notice.
I don't think so.
No, you move whichever way you want to move is what you get.
Okay, then I'll withdraw that. I move to approve in-person/hybrid instruction plan for the week of December fourteenth and a pause for the week of January fourth.
I have a second.
Second.
So, is there any discussion? I have some. Oh, well, let me, I'll, I'll start and then turn it over to you, Mark. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, look, I think that's, as I said before, I think it's a very hard discussion. I do want to recognize also that there are some, you know, there are a lot of opinions on this, a lot of strong opinions, a lot of emotions on this. And sometimes some of the comments maybe let too much of the emotion get through and, and get a little bit less respectful than what I would prefer. I want to say that I think it's extremely important for us to remember how hard our teachers and staff and administrators have worked, all of them. I think it's important to remind people that when we say our schools are safe, which we have and which they are, the reason they're safe is because of what our teachers and our staff and our administrators are doing. So, we, we have to be careful to remember that it's, it's a community that's trying to work together, and we don't always agree and we don't have any perfect solutions. But that the more that we can respect each other and the more we can recognize that all of us have contributed importantly to the, to the, to the positive outcomes that we've seen so far, I think the better off we will be as a community and the better off our kids will be. So, I, I just want to remind us all and once again thank the entire community for the positive work that it's doing.
I'm gonna tack on to that. So I want to reflect, as I've been hearing the discussion today, that there are no perfect solutions to the challenges we face. And there's no clear right answer, and there's clearly no consensus in our community, nor is there clear guidance from our governing and regulatory bodies. So as a board and a community, we're balancing and weighing many factors and competing needs. And we all try to make the best decisions we can, knowing that each decision is not going to make everyone happy, and there's going to be downsides for every choice we make. And sometimes our choices have unintended consequences. And in this case, it seems that our decisions last week were heard by some as a lack of appreciation for our teachers. And that is not the case. And to our teachers, I'm sorry for this misunderstanding. Today, we heard about the distress of the teachers and staff through public comment, through the survey results, and through Dr. Kremescoli's incredibly articulate and heartfelt remarks. She reminded us that staff and teachers are human first, dealing with challenges inside and outside the schools. And that they too are struggling as they deal with their role as teacher, parent, community member, and spouse. So, teachers, we recognize your humanity and we appreciate your service to our children and our community, and we know there are many challenges that you all face. I think I speak for the board when I say we will reflect on ways that we can make things easier for you, such as what we heard today, providing longer-term guidance on instruction to the extent that that's possible in a pandemic. And I really hope that the motion that was made just now today, moving for more in-person instruction for the week of December fourteenth is seen by all as a validation of the meaningful ways that in-person instruction is valued to our students, to the parents, to the community. So, I'm in favor of the motion and I, and I really hope that it's, again, seen as a validation of the good work. Ellen.
I want to start by echoing first and foremost the support of our teachers completely and without hesitation. I, I know personally on a daily basis, I think my children's teachers all the time for the work that they do, and, and if that hasn't been clear enough, I apologize. You know, as a, as a board member here in board meetings, that that hasn't come through and if that was somehow misconstrued. But I'd also like to address a larger issue that I, that I, that has come through to me over and over again, and I listened today. And it's, it's the onslaught of all or nothing, accusatory and sweeping statements that have been made by many, everybody in our community. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna blame one group or another. But it's been going on for, since this began. It's been going on since the beginning of this year. And, and there are statements that imply that any one group of us, the board, the administration, the teachers and support staff, that any one group is against the other group has anything but caring at the base and broadest, most important part of it all, anything but caring for the children and the health and safety of all the people in our district at the heart of every, every decision we make. That, that isn't what all decisions come down to on all of our parts, whether we agree or disagree. The notion that any one of us that, and from, from any of those groups of people don't care about each other is really hurtful. It's really hurtful. And the accusations that are made, I know that the teachers feel it and they hear it in these board meetings. Administration, I mean, I can't speak for you, but I see it on your faces. I know, you know, the times that you said the negative, the negatives that you hear. It's not enough. It's never enough. That that's, it's just so trying and, and hurtful. And, and I will only speak for, as a single board member, but threats from community members to board members telling me that if, you know, we decide a certain way that we're gonna be responsible for the deaths of, of teachers' families, or inversely, if, if, you know, if it is another way, we're gonna be responsible for someone's child, you know, taking their life. I mean, the, the, the threats and the sweeping statements and the, the hugeness of the accusations are just, it's out of control, and it is splitting whoever wrote the letter saying that it is splitting our community apart and making it crumble. It is taking its toll on all of us. We're all feeling it. We're all living through a pandemic. We all have, we're all people. Every person sitting here on this board that sits through these meetings and spends hours and hours and hours is, is doing so voluntarily. It's hard. The administration, who has not slept, I don't think, since ever. I can't, I don't know. I, it's mind-boggling. I don't know how you do it. But they're doing it for the community and for the teachers and for the kids. The amount of work that's been put in to trying to make these decisions happen has been staggering. And the efforts, yes, by the teachers and the support staff and every janitor and person who cleans the buildings and, and sanitizes and does everything. The efforts of every single person has been unbelievable in getting us to where we are now. So, is there an immense appreciation for every single person in this room and outside of this room and every teacher? Absolutely, absolutely. A deep gratitude and caring, and maybe that's something we should all reflect on now going into the, this holiday season, which has been the toughest year ever. And maybe take a step back, all of us, and reflect on the things we say and how we communicate it to each other. And maybe, I think, I think Carrie said it best, is find a little bit of grace again and maybe go backwards a little bit and find grace and and just understand that every decision we make, it might not be perfect, but we are all, every single one of us, doing the best we can. And we're doing our best to guess what the best decision is, and it might not always be the right one. But it's, at the time, it's what we think is the best, given all of the facts given to us at the time. So, I'll just leave it. Others?
Can I, can I just jump in and say, first of all, thank you, everyone, for your comments and for, for hearing the various perspectives today. It is truly appreciated, and, and we know that, that these are not easy decisions. To our community, I want to say thank you for stepping up and taking the time to submit support for our teachers and our support staff. It is incredibly challenging. It's, it's emotionally very difficult to hear what we, we do hear, which so often is, is complaints and, and disappointment rather than praise and acknowledgement of the efforts that are putting, that are being put forward. And sometimes we, we, we understand that we are motivated sometimes when we're upset rather than when we're happy to, to share our perspectives. And so I, I do want to say thank you to those who are upset. We, we understand that as well. And we do know that there continue to be ways to improve. I, 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 I just want to acknowledge that the public comment forum has changed so much in this pandemic, and we are required to read the statements that are submitted. We don't have the option of censoring them. That is, that is part of the requirement of the Open Meetings Act. And it has, at times, made it easier for someone to submit a thought rather than showing up to a meeting and participating wholly in that meeting. And so, because a thought is submitted, does not make that thought accurate. And it certainly doesn't always make it reflective of the entire community. What Tony and Katie read today does not necessarily represent every perspective that is out there. And I know personally, as a mom, and I know personally, professionally, as a colleague of, of those who are also grappling with very difficult decisions in their districts, that saying anything right now is simple and predictable is absolutely not the case. Every single district is grappling with the same challenges we are, and every single district has teachers, staff, and administrators who are working tirelessly to serve the students and the community that they work for. All of this is incredibly hard, and I, I again just want to thank our teachers, our support staff, and our administrators. And I also want to thank our parents who are taking the time to engage in the process, to share their perspective, and to acknowledge both the good and the challenges that we all face right now.
There others? There is the motion on the floor. Do we need to restate it, or do people remember it? Are we good? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dancy's ready?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwiler?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes. Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the contract agreement with Safeguard Surveillance LLC, please?
It's consideration, I think, of the contract.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I move to approve consideration of the agreement with Safeguard Surveillance LLC.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this one? Will the clerk please?
I apologize, let me just jump in and just clarify what the motion should, should be. And, and I, I, again, I apologize because it's probably not clearly written there. So I think the motion is to approve and authorize the superintendent to execute an agreement with Safeguard Surveillance subject to final review and approval by the board's attorney and the superintendent. I am sorry that that wasn't clear. We, we still have to finalize everything there.
Yeah.
So you are, if, if you approve this consideration, you really are approving and authorizing me as the superintendent to execute an agreement with Safeguard Surveillance subject to final review and approval by the board's attorney and me.
Katie, can I say so?
Yes.
Okay.
Because I don't know that I would remember all that. Sorry. And the, I think the second still stands.
Yeah, I think that as long as we all understand that that's what we're voting on, then we're all good.
We all, are we all clear? Basically, we're giving the superintendent authorization to enter into a contract after it's blessed with the lawyers. Is there any further discussion? Well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Dancy's ready?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwiler?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes. Motion carries. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss negotiations and specific personnel.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Dancy's ready?
Yes.
Frank Panzika?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Mark Steen?
Yes.
Ellen Sternwiler?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes. Uh, the yeas have it, motion carries. We are now moving to executive session.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Not until after we come out of...